Services Authority, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. Take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I'm moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Member Pats and a second from Member Donahue to approve the agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, Ex parte communications, any members wishing to report? Hearing none, public comment for consent agenda and items not on the agenda in the subject matter of the MESA.
Rob Arias, 15-year Emeryville resident, I just wanted to put a plug in for moving 12.1 up in the agenda to accommodate some of the seniors that we have in the building to speak on behalf of that item, thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on items on this agenda? Seeing none, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second?
Wait, this is for...
This is the yellow agenda, MESA. I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Martinez to approve consent, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. It's approved, this meeting is adjourned. Time is 7:15, Madam Clerk. Called to order, City of Emeryville is successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. Take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion from Member Donahue?
Second.
And I have a second from Member Martinez, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Members, are there ex parte communications? Seeing none, public comment for consent agenda or items not on this agenda?
Okay, two public safety items. The standard boilerplate that I'm now bringing to you every meeting, which is that this meeting is not handicap accessible. The fire official here, Alameda County Fire official, I forgot the gentleman's name, can testify to this. If you happen to need a wheelchair, you can't get into this meeting without summoning somebody to help you here, which is not, shouldn't be the case. It should be, you just push the button, the doors open, you ride the elevator up, and you can enter the room. It should be ADA accessible, but I'm here telling you again, it's not ADA accessible, so these meetings must be ADA accessible, so I think you should fix that. And then, on a similar note, more than a year ago, I alerted the council that if you have business at the police station, and you're in the lobby and there's a fire, you can die because there's no fire escape, no legal fire escape. We spent one, I think it was four, over $4 million, I believe, I can't remember, on the remodel of the fire station, and, but the $4 million wasn't enough to secure a legal egress in the event of a fire. I was told that the city was going to fix it by putting some servo motor on some set of doors that would open in the event of a fire alarm going off, and then the public could exit through the stairs, which would be legal, but apparently there's been no action on that. So still, that sits as a fire trap, the Emeryville Police Station, and I've alerted you to this, I think, three times now over more than a year, so I think you should, it behooves you to fix that, it's a public safety issue, you need to fix that, and you need to make these meetings be ADA accessible. Thank you.
Other members of the public wish to comment? Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Member Pats and a second from Member Martinez to approve consent, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Sorry. Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Time is 7:18, that meeting is adjourned. Time is still 7:18, Madam Clerk. Called to order, the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please note, all members are still present. Take a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Member Donahue to approve the agenda, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Special orders of the day, we have one proclamation. Is Sue Ray here?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, Sue Ray.
Hi.
Would you like to join me back here?
So, we have one proclamation today, and this is a proclamation in honor of Earth Day 2018, and joining me is Sue Ray Hong from the Sierra Club of Alameda County?
Uh huh.
Right?
Of East Bay.
East Bay, yep. And, thank you. And so, we're going to do our proclamation and then invite her to say a few words about Earth Day and the work the Sierra Club is doing. Earth Day 2018 proclamation, whereas over four decades ago, the first Earth Day was celebrated as a call to action for every citizen, every family, and every public official to join together to forge a cleaner, healthier future in this country. And whereas Earth Day has given voice to the conservation movement, led to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency, and resulted in adoption of landmark laws on clean air and water, and whereas Earth Day serves to remind us to accept our responsibilities to future generations as stewards of the environment that they will inherit, and whereas the City of Emeryville has adopted a Climate Action Plan 2.0 with 100 initiatives and strategies for reducing greenhouse gas emissions and building a healthier and more resilient community, and whereas the City of Emeryville has set goals of 40% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and 80% by 2050, and whereas the City of Emeryville signed on to the Global Covenant of Mayors to publicly declare our intention to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and commit to regular emissions reporting, and whereas since 2004, the residents and businesses in Emeryville have achieved a 12% reduction in water use and a 50% reduction in solid waste disposal, and there are 1,482 kilowatts of solar photovoltaics installed across Emeryville.
Voltaics.
Voltaics.
Voltaics. Thank you. Whereas Emeryville has the lowest per household carbon footprint in the Bay Area and in the UC Berkeley consumption-based model, and whereas there will be Earth Day shoreline cleanup on April 22nd at Shorebird Park coordinated with East Bay Regional Parks, lead cleanup to the Emeryville Crescent on the same day, and whereas everyone is encouraged to participate in programs and activities that will protect our environment and contribute to a healthy future, now therefore be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I do hereby proclaim Sunday, April 22nd, 2018, as Earth Day in the City of Emeryville, to reaffirm our commitment to the protection of the environment in a beautiful city, and be it further resolved, the City Council encourages all environment, I'm sorry, all Emeryville residents to participate in programs and activities that will protect our environment and contribute to a healthy and sustainable future. Proclaim the 17th day of April, 2017, at a regular meeting by the City Council and the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. Thank you. Would you like to say a few things?
Sure. Oops, and I broke your microphone. Just part of Earth Day. Well, thanks, everyone, and thank you to Mayor Bowders for having me here. My name is Sue Ray Hong, and I'm a volunteer with the Sierra Club, leading the tree planting team here in the East Bay. Environmentalism and sustainability have been lifelong passions of mine, and when I moved to the Bay Area, I knew I wanted to volunteer with the Sierra Club to be able to lend my skills to an organization that has a long history of advocating for the protection of our natural spaces and resources. So it's a great honor to be representing Sierra Club today and sharing a bit about the organization and the work that we do. The Sierra Club was born out of the creation of one of California's most treasured places, Yosemite National Park. In 1892, John Muir and a group of naturalists, artists, journalists, and professors from Berkeley and Stanford established the Sierra Club. The organization swore to protect the Sierra Nevadas and California's coastal redwoods. Since then, that commitment to protection has extended well beyond California's borders, across the West Coast, and to the country at large. The Sierra Club not only helped to establish Glacier National Park and Mount Rainier National Park, but has also led the fight against resource exploitation and the destruction of our country's natural spaces, protecting, among others, Utah's Dinosaur National Monument and the Grand Canyon. We, in partnership with passionate politicians, activists, and community members, have also helped pass the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and the Endangered Species Act. Today, those natural places and the policies that were born out of such efforts are in great peril. We live in a situation where environmental intelligence and respect for our planet's natural places and resources are more important than ever before. As the Bureau of Land Management is selling off natural treasures such as Chaco Canyon, Grand Staircase Escalante, and the Great Sand Dunes to the highest bidder, and the Department of the Interior is expanding oil and gas drilling into every corner of America's waters, and the EPA is removing protections put in place by the Clean Air and Clean Water Acts, essentially giving corporations free license to pollute our air and poison our water systems, in such a time, we must bolster our vigilance and not give in to fatigue. We must protect the places and things that cannot protect themselves and educate the effects of environmental threats in places where knowledge and the information is lacking. Wild and natural places not only nourish us with the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the food we eat, but they are the places that we enjoy in moments of reflection and that amaze us and our children with the wonder of all the beauty that is possible in the world. This is not only our home, but home to all the other organisms, plant, and animal life that exists in a perfect balance that makes life at all possible on this planet, and it's our duty and our privilege to protect this home and keep it flourishing for ourselves and future generations. On this Earth Day, there are many events happening across the state and across the city to commemorate our commitment to the planet. The Sierra Club SF Bay Chapter and Northern Alameda County Group alone is hosting celebrations, beach cleanups, tree planting, and carbon offset activities in Martinez, Alameda, El Cerrito, Albany Beach, Mill Valley, Oakland, and SF, and we invite you all to join us for any of these events or other Earth Day events happening in this city and the region itself. You can find more of this on our website at sierraclub.org. But of course, Earth Day is not a single day of work, but a recognition and a renewal of our continuous commitment to raising environmental consciousness and working to improve the natural conditions of the world that we live in. For this reason, we are proud that the City of Emeryville has adopted Climate Action Plan 2.0, aligning itself with California's climate goals and committing itself to firm targets for greenhouse gas reduction within the next few years, as well as spearheading many other sustainability initiatives. This kind of leadership will set an example for cities across the country. It sends a message that cities like Emeryville actually care about their communities, will stand up for what's right, and not sell out its own citizens for a quick buck to the highest bidder. Because, as we all know, healthier ecosystems mean healthier, thriving communities. And let's not stop at Earth Day. This year, get outside, explore the state and natural parks of California, make sure to leave no trace, bike and walk more, eat less meat, fight against destructive policies that compromise our ecosystems, don't forget to compost, and share the joys of the mountains, the forests, and the coastlines with your neighbors and your children. Thanks to you and the City of Emeryville, we can all make the East Bay a healthier and cleaner place. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mayor Bowders, I think Nancy Humphreys wanted to say a word?
Yes, did you want to stand on this side or that side?
I'm standing on this side. I don't need to turn my back on you all. I just, I do want to give more information about our Earth Day events. The City of Emeryville is sponsoring a shoreline cleanup at Shorebird Park this Sunday, Earth Day, at 9:00 AM, 9:00 to 11:30. We'd like you to come at 9:00 so that everyone can get the safety talk and be best prepared. With cleanup Shorebird Park, we meet in the Chevy's parking lot, so I encourage you to come out. At the same time, but from 9:00 to 12:00, East Bay Regional Parks is doing a cleanup of the Emeryville Crescent, which we usually can't access, we can only access it at certain times because of the bird nesting and tides, so that's also on Sunday morning at 9:00, and for that one, you meet just east of the fire station, just sort of across from the Watergate Market. So, pick one of those and come, we have all the equipment you need, you might want to bring something, gloves if you like, but we have all that stuff, so I'd like to see you out there. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item five is announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our next meeting, I will be providing an announcement of all the expirations of terms for committee and commission members that are going to come due in June, on June 30th. To prepare for that, we are going to be advertising and recruiting for people to sign up to participate on our boards and commissions and committees, and with an ultimate date of interview and appointment on June 26th at a special council meeting. So stay tuned for future meetings where I will announce exactly how many vacancies there will be and on what committees and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, special announcements or reports on meetings and attendance, I'll start with Member Pats.
So I attended the Housing Authority of Alameda County meeting, and with the new federal budget extension, I never know what they call it, the housing authority has got about 92 cents on the dollar, so what was expected to be really bad is merely bad. And so, and then in the good news, they were able to purchase some land from Caltrans in Castro Valley to put up some new low-income housing. And so, and, you know, I will say, because it fits with our conversation earlier on housing, I only asked one question, and that was, how close is it to transit, and it's right on a transit hub, because it's near, I want to call it Tea Gardens or something like that, so it's a major transit corridor, so it's kind of exciting, it's both on a creek and a transit area. So, those are the two reports, I head to DC for them on Thursday. So I will miss shore cleanup, so.
Excellent. Vice Mayor Medina?
Nothing to report.
Member Martinez?
Nothing to report.
Member Donahue?
No.
Just your regular update that if you wish to get updates, you can go to acalert.org and get information on fire situations happening in our community, or updates from the fire and emergency personnel here, and you can subscribe to that through your phone or online. The City Managers' report?
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ex parte communications, members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? I'll start with Vice Mayor Medina.
I do. Regarding item 12.3, I spoke with representatives of both Motivate and OFO, I also received communications regarding item 11.1.
Okay, Member Pats?
Just I spoke with members of the Community Subgrant Committee.
Okay, Member Martinez?
Regarding item 12.3, I spoke with someone from Lighthouse Public Affairs who represent Motivate, and regarding item 12.1, I spoke to a member of the Board of the Berkeley Film Foundation.
And Member Donahue?
12.3, I also spoke with someone representing Motivate. 12.1, I have spoken with at least four applicants, spoken with Joey Enos, he came and interviewed me about, for the Historical Society, I've spoken with Nancy Carpen-Dancers, with Arch Nahorstein from Kala Art Institute, and I'm a member of the 45th Street Artists Co-op. One of the applicants, does that prevent me from voting on this issue?
No.
I can still vote?
You can still, you can still participate.
Okay.
Is that all? I had a conversation with Jason Overman from representing Motivate on item 12.3, and I've spoken to members of the Berkeley Film Festival regarding item 12.1. Public comment for the consent agenda or items not on this agenda? Seeing none, we're on the consent agenda, I'll take a motion?
So moved.
I would like to...
Wait, go ahead.
Pull one item, 10.5.
Which item? 10.5 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville setting the administrative fine schedule for administrative citations pursuant to Emeryville Municipal Code. We will pull item 10.5. Member Pats, would you like to amend your motion?
So amended.
Is there a second?
I second.
There's a motion and a second, a motion from Member Pats and a second from Member Donahue to approve items 10.1 through 10.6 with 10.5 excluded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Item 10.5, Michael Geena, would you like to provide a brief presentation on whatever 10.5 is about for Mr. Donahue?
Would the council like a presentation, or if members have...
I could ask some questions.
Sure.
Fair enough.
This, the intent of this for, is to have people behave better, but does the law say that when we're going to have fines and/or fees, that there's some other controlling documents about that? Like, for example, if we increase and change our parking citywide, does the city collect all those fees, does it go through the county, do we have some other bit of legal stuff that happens around enforcing our city municipal code? Is that segregated?
Yes, so what I'd like to clarify for the council is that what is for you tonight is a fine schedule versus a fee schedule. So what you're considering tonight is the fine schedule related to violations of the municipal code where we are pursuing administrative citations as part of the enforcement process. And that is different from a fee schedule, such as your master fee schedule, for example, where you are, in a fee schedule, you are setting up the cost recovery for the cost providing that particular service. So with this fine schedule, you're establishing what the penalty is for violations of various provisions of the municipal code.
Okay, so then, if we have traffic enforcement or parking violations?
Mm-hmm.
How would you characterize that? Is that...
So, the parking enforcement would be, that would be essentially a, that would be set up by a different fine schedule, I believe, and I'm going to look to the police chief for that, in terms, and that would, I believe, is set by code, by the vehicle code, but I could be wrong. But this is going, that is a, that is a particular, but that is a different set of, so I've been told that that is correct, so the vehicle code will set the fine schedule for vehicular fines. This would be, the fine schedule before you tonight is only for violations of the municipal code.
Okay, and so, in the future, the, the intent of this, it said, is just to, not to earn money for the city, and is that going to be true on fines for all parts of the municipal code?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Or just, does that follow through for all parts of municipal code? That is, the intent is not to earn money?
Yes, I mean, ultimately, our goal is to try to get voluntary compliance for provisions of our municipal code, because the city is not interested so much in receiving fines as a result of violations of the code, but we are interested in having persons who are in violation to come into compliance voluntarily. And that's why we resort to assessing fines as really one of the last resorts, right? Before we assess the fine, we give the violator notice of what the violation is and an opportunity to correct that action before we assess the fine, and in fact, we provide, we will provide notice on multiple occasions. Because again, the goal is voluntary compliance and not, and not the fine penalty. That being said, the city does need an enforcement mechanism in the case where requests for voluntary compliance are not forthcoming.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other members have questions?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
There's a motion from Member Donahue and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the item, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
All right, it moves us to our public hearings. Item 11.1 is a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting an amendment to the Sherman Williams Plan Unit Development, the PDP, to allow the removal of 11 street trees on the west side of Horton Street. For this item, due to the proximity of my home to this project, as it has been for quite a while now, I am recused, and I will turn this over now to Vice Mayor Medina.
So we are here for an amendment to the PUD and the PDP for the Sherman Williams Project. The Sherman Williams Project, at this point, has a number of entitlements to it. The original entitlement of the PDP was approved by the council about two years ago in November of 2016, and since then, a tentative subdivision map has been approved, as well as FTPs for the park and open space, as well as FTP for all the new buildings that will be going in the project. At this time, Sherman Williams is completely entitled, except for one small piece of the FTP for the existing building, which we anticipate coming in late summer, early fall. So as a part of the approval of the Sherman Williams PUD, PDP, one of the conditions outlined the list of community benefits in order of priority to be provided by the applicant to obtain development bonus points. So the value of these bonus points for the community benefits is approximately a little over $7 million at this time, and one of the first three things that will be used to provide the benefits is, one, is a retrofit of the existing building for a pass-through, a provision of a public art space in one of the new buildings, and provision of a shuttle to West Oakland Art Station. After that, the list of improvements of the community benefits are in the category of public improvements. And of that, the first is providing sidewalk and utility undergrounding, and the one that we are concerned with today is the Horton Street section. So Horton Street between Park Avenue and the new 46th Street, utility undergrounding is one of the community benefit that was approved by the council and the commission, and it is with this that we are here today. In order for the utility undergrounding to occur, and because the map has been approved, so the engineers have started to do some amount of design work in preparation, and regarding the undergrounding, there are few issues. So this is just a map of what we are talking about, so the undergrounding that we are talking about is Park Avenue, along Horton Street, and the new 46th Street. So some of those constraints in the undergrounding of the utilities is that the PG&E does not allow joint trench boxes in the roadway. Due to the utility congestion in the roadway, the conduits will also need to be routed to the sidewalk area. This is sort of the snapshot of the Horton Street in concern, this is what is under Horton Street, and so just to give a little bit of a blow-up, so what we have here under Horton Street are two water lines, a sanitary sewer line, a recycled water line, and a gas line. In addition to this, new stormwater drains associated with the Sherman William projects will also be installed in the section of Horton Street. Other issues regarding this concern trees, there are 11 trees on the west side of Horton Street and 30 trees on the east side of Horton Street. Trenching work will jeopardize and compromise the health of the trees, and it is likely that all or most of the trees may need to be replaced. Now, if the joint trench is put on the east side, then the sidewalk will need to be reconstructed using the community benefit funds from the project, which would leave less funds available for other community benefits down that chart that I showed you. And it should be noted that the sidewalk on the west side will be replaced in any event without the use of community benefit funds, because the west side fronts, the building frontage, and the replacement and the reconstruction of the sidewalk is part of the project, and it does not come out of the community benefit funds. So with this in mind, the public work staff here recommends that the joint trench work for utility and undergrounding occur on the west side, removing the existing 11 trees and replacing them with new trees in better soil conditions. So I'm going to walk you through the Horton Street section, this is Horton Street looking south, so you see trees on both sides. This is the sidewalk on the east side, this is sort of the road walking further down, this is the sidewalk on the west side, and for going further down south, this is on the east side again. And for going further down south, this is on the east side again, you can see the trees and the sidewalk. And this is going for the south near, again, on the east side. And this is again on the east side, and that ends at Park Avenue. So in order to remove 11 trees on the west side of Horton Street, it requires an amendment to the PUD approval, as page 18 of those PUD plans shows these trees to remain. So Horton Street is at the bottom, so what we are talking about, that this is a part of the PUD plan, that these green spots that you see are existing trees, and the blue ones are just filling in with, filling in the gaps with new trees. So this is part of the PUD landscape plan. As you may notice, as a part of the project, the applicant will be planting a number of trees, including street trees, and there are approximately 75 new street trees that will come as a result of the project. And so what, the trees I'm talking about are trees along Sherman, along the Greenway, and along the new streets, not including 75 in the trees in the public park and the various open areas. So in order, for the PUD amendment is amending page 18, which shows that the trees on Horton Streets will be removed and will be replaced by new trees. So the Planning Commission did review this proposal and at their March 15 meeting, and they approved a tree removal permit for the 11 trees on the west side of Horton and waived the requirement to pay the replacement value fee because removal of the trees is indirectly warranted due to the conditions of approval requiring undergrounding of utilities, that the project will replace new trees in better soil conditions, and that will also allow preservation of the trees, 30 trees on the east side of Horton Street. The commission's approval for the tree removal permit is final and is contingent upon the council approval of this amendment. So both the staff and the commission recommendation is to replace, to replace the existing landscape plan on page 18 of the approved plan set with new landscape plan that shows new trees along west side of Horton Street. In terms of going back to the Planning Commission action, the action was unanimous. It was 4-0. There were two commissioners who were absent, Commissioners Donaldson and Commissioner Kang, and one position is currently vacant. Two members of the public spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. One was Jack Guzoni. He is a resident of 1500 Park and a co-chair of the Park Committee. He expressed support for the removal of these trees in order to allow the undergrounding, and he also submitted a letter to the Planning Commission saying precisely the same thing. In addition, Mr. Tim Curran, resident of 4250 Horton Street, also spoke at the commission hearing, and he reminded the commission that the council had unanimously declined to remove the trees during the PDP approval. And he also expressed a concern that trenching and tree removal will release contaminants into the atmosphere and suggested that the tents be used in conjunction with water spraying at hotspots to mitigate distribution. If the council is not in favor of approving this amendment, there are alternative actions that may be options for the council. So if the council does not wish to amend the PDP, then what will happen is that the engineering plans for undergrounding, trenching on the east side will be completed, and the number of trees that will need to be removed will be finalized. At that time, as the removal of trees on the east side does not require an amendment to the PDP, the commission will act on that tree removal permit, and it will come to the council only on appeal. So that concludes my presentation. We have public works staff here present today to answer any questions. We also have city arborist present if you have questions regarding the trees, and of course, the applicant is also here. So at this time, if you have questions of me, I would be happy to answer.
Anyone have a question? Councilmember Donahue?
Has the trenching condition in that section of the street been accurately measured?
I'm going to refer these questions to the public works staff. I believe Mike Roberts, the senior civil engineer, will be answering.
Good evening. Mike Roberts, Public Works Department, Senior Civil Engineer. So your question about the dimensions of...
Well, is, in other words, you said in the presentation that there are two water lines, a gas line, a sewer line, all in the street. How accurate is the knowledge about where those things are, and how much space is left over? Have you made a measurement of all of those?
So, no. The exact location of those utilities hasn't been determined. That's usually done later in the process when it, the design is actually underway. We're still in the planning phase. So once we're in the design phase, we'll be potholing all those lines to determine exactly where they are.
So it's possible that there is room in the street to have the new lines, but it's unknown because it hasn't been measured?
No. The boxes for all the utilities will be, are required to be in the sidewalk area. So the only thing that could be placed in the roadway, if things aren't so constricted, would be the conduit.
And how big are those boxes?
Some of them are very large. They range in size from two feet by one foot to six feet by eight feet.
Is the larger one for a transformer?
Transformer or any kind of equipment. There are switches on some of the poles that need to be undergrounded.
Can you go back on the slides to the picture? I think that one right there. Nope.
Which picture?
It looked like slide 15. Actually, can you go to 16? Okay, it's the same. Sorry, I was right the first time, 15. Go back. So you said we couldn't put a joint trench in the street. Is that accurate? Was that what was said?
Yes.
Yes.
Unlikely.
Unlikely or not allowed?
I would defer to Public Works responding to that.
So there are really two parts to a joint trench. One is the boxes, and one is the actual conduit. The boxes need to be in the sidewalk area, cannot be in the street. The conduit, it's preferred by the utilities for it to be in the street, but given the congestion in Horton Street, we're expecting that it'll have to be placed in the sidewalk area.
And how many of those boxes are needed?
It hasn't been designed. The word I heard from a design consultant were numerous. So, you know, more than five, less than 20.
Because I'm seeing along that street, five places where you wouldn't disturb trees when you place them, right? So if the conduit's going down the middle, the boxes are between the conduit and the buildings, correct? They're not, you wouldn't put them in the street. You'd put them between the conduit and the street and the buildings.
Right. And you would have to sweep in from the street into the side of the box.
Right.
And, yeah, that's damaging to any trees that are...
But, if may I?
Right. But I'm seeing five holes where we've got some space. If you look at all the blue trees, those don't exist. So that's space to sweep in. That's nice, big, broad sidewalk space to sweep in.
I believe the spacing of the existing trees is less than 15 feet in many cases, and that's, usually you need 30, 20 to 40 feet of sweep.
So, and again, looking at the second set of trees, but I'll come back to that. So joint trenching is possible. It is, I mean, I went and read the Green Book, I think it's called, from PG&E that has all the sort of provisions, and I spent some time, and I got to learn a new word, street mandrills. Am I saying that correctly?
Mandrill, yeah.
Yeah. I like that word. So I did find out that putting them in the street is possible, but I'll hold off there and come back to discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez, do you have...
I'll just ask a clarifying question. Mike, can you explain for the benefit of the public, what are the benefits of undergrounding utilities, why cities do it, why they take certain opportunities in development? Well, that might be more for Charlie. But what are the benefits generally?
A lot of times, it's just aesthetic. It can improve property values of surrounding properties. During earthquakes, they're, you know, you won't have poles falling into the street and being a hazard, and also utility lines undergrounded withstand earthquakes better than when they're overhead. That's about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I would note that the fires in the North Bay last October were believed to have been caused by electrical wires that came down in the wind, which doesn't happen if they're undergrounded.
And Charlie, would you mind talking, speaking to the value of undergrounding and how cities generally pay for undergrounding?
Well, they're...
What opportunities there are?
Actually, I would defer to Public Works on that, but their, PG&E has a couple of different funding sources that they have for undergrounding. I'm not sure exactly how that works. I don't think we've done that recently. You can also do a, what do you call it, an assessment district where the owners within an area will vote to tax themselves, which we attempted to do several years ago in the North Hollis area unsuccessfully. The primary way that we attempt to do it in Emeryville is to get developers to do it. I think the PG&E is called Rule 20, isn't it?
Rule 20, and the costs are shared, yeah.
Costs are shared, yeah, okay. May I, Vice Mayor Medina?
I have a couple clarifying questions first, maybe? Two, I've got two clarifying questions. So with the congestion under the street level, in addition to just the number of lines that are already under there, is there some buffer zones that are mandated in between those lines? I imagine you wouldn't want like electricity right next to a gas line.
Right. In general, there's a three-foot separation required between electrical facilities and wet utilities such as storm drains, sewer, water.
And we have both of those under there?
Yes, all through the street, throughout the street.
I'm still, and I'll get you next. And my secondary question was, in terms of the boxes that have to go under the sidewalks, do we get to choose, for instance, Councilmember Pats made a point about there being some gaps already, could we choose to put those in certain places, or do we not get to say, put it where there's not a tree?
There's some latitude there, but...
I mean, a couple of these are next to each other already, so...
Yeah. There is some latitude to position a box between trees. You still have the sweeps to contend with, and based on the spacing I see, you'll be in the root zone of trees.
Okay. Councilmember Pats?
I'm sorry, you didn't answer Councilmember Medina's question. Electrical and gas go in the same trench, correct?
New electrical and gas go in the same trench with separation, yes.
Wait, gas?
Yeah.
So this project doesn't have a new gas line going in, but for typical joint trench, you can join gas, electric in the same trench.
It's the G and the E in PG&E.
I know that. I just didn't know you...
No, that's why I'm there saying they put them together. It's, they're all there, yeah.
I thought it was just for wires.
Oh, they do them together.
Any other clarifying questions? Yes?
I have more like the, do the tree roots tend to grow in any particular pattern? Like, do they grow towards the building more than the street, or more towards the street than the building? Because the street's lower, therefore it's wetter? The roots tend to go under the gutter more? Or is there, is there anything you can say about that?
They tend to grow where there's no hard surfacing. In this case, that's limited to the tree wells, and they're basically, you know, as you can see by the heaving in the sidewalk, they're, they're looking for any crack in the pavement to force their way through to get oxygen.
Does the owner of the property own right to the wall of the building, or do they own the entire sidewalk and the public has an easement?
I believe it's a lot-lined building, so, yeah, the sidewalk's entirely in public right way. Maybe a foot or six inches somewhere off a setback.
So in other words, the, there might be an option to have the conduit for this go right up against the building, avoiding the majority of the tree roots of the existing old trees. I mean, is that conceivable, that that could not endanger these well-developed trees and keep the lion's share of them?
I think that's hard to say without exposing the tree roots and knowing exactly where they are.
Seeing no further clarifying questions, do we have any more information from staff? Charlie, did you want to say something still?
Actually, your questions covered what I was going to say. Thank you.
Great. Then I'll release you, and I will open this public hearing. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Tim Curran of 4250 Horton Street, and I'm talking for the Friends of Horton Street. I've just given you some information written and also a list of membership. I hope you've received all that. So in essence, we feel that this request for an amendment is premature, that we should be looking at a design from the trench designer, from the applicant, that we would be able to review, instead of trying to figure it out here in the public discourse. We should be not proceeding that plan and that design with an amendment that would influence that design. So for instance, if we remove the trees today, or approve to remove the trees today, the design that is underway by the developer will then choose that path automatically, instead of looking at the issues that might go with locating that trench in a roadway. So I'll just point out one thing that's going on in the roadway. You're getting an extra storm sewer on that stretch, and you're going to have redundant storm sewers. I don't have any idea what all that means, but you're going to have two of them. For all I know, the trench designer could get rid of one of them and just increase the capacity of the new one. I don't know. But that's up for the trench designer and the designers that are here to present you with their plan. The details of why the trees are going to be removed, or should be removed, one sidewalk or the other, is kind of not at issue at this time. That should come up at another time. We appreciate the difference in the value and health of different trees and whatnot, but we don't see that at this time, approving the removal will serve the design and the installation of the public benefit of the public improvement of the utility undergrounding. I think in essence, that's what I really want to say. There's probably more to it, and you've seen it in the letter, but it's kind of complex, and it's hard to pull out the details. So thank you for the consideration, and I hope you reject the recommendation tonight to allow an amendment to the PUD, PDP.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Okay, I wanted to start by saying that the staff at the City of Emeryville, they like to cut our trees down. They don't, like, unlike the residents who value our trees, they don't. We've had a UFO, Urban Forestry Ordinance, since 2003. The staff has not once, over 111 trees, requests to cut trees have come in since 2003, and the staff has not one time recommended to the decision-makers to save any trees. So they really don't, I mean, that's their agenda. But it's not surprising. I mean, they don't live in Emeryville, so they don't care about the trees. We do care about the trees, and we know that we do because we have an ordinance to protect our mature street trees, existing trees. Which then brings me to, why should one public benefit overturn another? The Urban Forestry Ordinance has been democratically vetted, and it's extant since 2003. We know that trees are popular. So this newcomer public benefit about undergrounding, because it looks, makes the streets look nicer, is the primary reason, as it was just testified, why should that... the primary reason, as it was just testified, why should that public benefit that has been less democratically vetted than a UFO overturn the UFO? To me, that's not rational. I think you should defer to the more democratically vetted public benefit and not take it as just at face value that it should be overturned in favor of this new idea. Okay, it needs to be said that the staff did not give the four of you in the report here tonight, the arborist report from the first PDP-PUD vote that the council took to save the trees, which was unanimous, the staff chose not to let you, the five, the four of you know that the city arborist has determined that all but two of the trees are healthy. So I think you should ask the staff, why didn't you give us the arborist report that made that finding? Because that, to me, is very curious, especially given their history of liking to cutting trees, our street trees. We, you notice there's a lot of questioning now about, is there room in the street to run the conduit and sweep over to locations to put the joint trenches in the sidewalk? Nothing definitive here has been presented. I did a public records request about, can the city prove to us that there is no room in the street, and the city cannot prove that. It's all just conjecture by the staff that this has to be done, and I just, I think they don't have any credibility. I think they want to help the developer here, and I just think you should work on our behalf and not the developer's bottom line. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this up for discussion. Councilmember Donahue, do you want to kick us off?
I would like to show what another city does about street trees. Charlie, could I get you to put up on the screen here something from Google Maps, a street view of 31 Third Avenue in Brooklyn? And I want to show how people in Brooklyn protect their trees and how they do work in an urban condition that's not entirely unlike ours, older buildings, older street trees. And, you know, our city going forward is becoming more and more of a city, and I think that we should recognize that being an urban place, the value of our trees becomes greater. The, I think you'd have to go to Google Maps, there you go, yeah, and then 31 Third Avenue, Brooklyn. Then see if, get a little person down there and see if you can rotate around to the Y there. Okay, now you see scaffolding here, protecting these trees during construction. If you rotate up top, you can see that they're repointing bricks up there, and they're working on the facade of this building, and they're probably going to do some of that on that older Sherwin-Williams building. And this is like standard fare in Brooklyn. And Brooklyn now, you can't stereotype that this is just Brooklyn. They don't say coffee and dogs and, no, it's like Emeryville now. It's like people from all over the world, and the English has become more generic. It's similar to us in this way. And they have decided that they can protect their trees using this scaffolding technique during construction. And the other advantage for protecting trees is, I see, is personal, that, you know, I'm going to be dead before these new trees, if they go in, become something other than lollipops, you know? Why should I wait around 20 years and have lollipop trees when we can retain potentially some of these older trees? And there might be a way to do that. And what I'm suggesting is, is that other cities have found ways to really protect trees and at the same time utilize their sidewalks in a more dense urban condition. And we are becoming more like a real city, and I think we should think about that for our future. There's some real questions about whether we could do this in ways that we can keep some of those trees, like having the conduit go potentially in the street and then sweep into boxes on the sidewalk and save a lot of those mature trees, or perhaps be the conduit right up against the building and not run into those roots. So I just feel like, I wish that we would do real thoughtful design about this and have the applicant do a little bit of research. You know, some of those slabs where those tree roots are could be easily pulled up. And also, I would just like to give Mike this quarter-inch fiberglass rebar here, because this is potential technology for our sidewalks. I've noticed that we get trip hazards within sometimes three or four years on our sidewalks because of tree roots. And traditional rebar doesn't go in sidewalks, maybe for cost or other reasons, but this rebar, fiberglass rebar, is cheap to install because it floats, you know, you can just push it under for the tension side, the root tries to break it. It's stronger than steel for tension. I think we could have this kind of thing in our sidewalks and not have root heaving up our sidewalks. Roots can coexist with our sidewalks better. For, you know, 300 bucks worth of this stuff in front of the whole Sherwin-Williams project, we could get 20 years out of that sidewalk. So I'd like to give you this, Mike. But this is made in Texas, it's reasonably priced. And I just think that we should do a little bit more study on this condition, and we have an older building and older street trees, and the uniform look that Planning Commissioner Keller talked about as an aesthetically desirable idea, I disagree with. I think having a mixture of new and old in our urban environment is just more interesting visually. And if we can retain some of the old street trees, I think it's just inherently more valuable and aesthetically interesting from the point of view of being a pedestrian. Other communities can have the uniform look like the suburbs, but we are not a suburban community. They're beneath us, they're suburban. We are urban. And we can go with something that's a little bit more sophisticated, and that's what I suggest we do here, is a little more study.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez, follow that.
Would someone from staff be able to remind us when the city council unanimously decided to save these trees and keep them as a condition in the PUD-PDP?
So the PDP was finalized on November 1st, 2016, and so the first reading would be two weeks before then.
Okay.
I went back and looked at it. I don't remember off the top of my head. It was a while ago.
I recall it was the previous council.
Well, yes. There were, there were a couple of study sessions, and it came up at the study sessions. As I recall, it wasn't particularly enthusiastic on the part of the council. It was, in fact, I think some of you said you might need more information, but you did decide ultimately that the trees should be preserved. When it came to you for the approval of the PUD, I don't believe it was even really discussed because the PUD plans showed the existing trees to remain, and that's what you approved, so there really wasn't anything to discuss. So I don't think it was at that time that you discussed it.
Well, I'm of the same mind now that I was at the time, which is that I am supportive of keeping the trees, but not at any cost. So where that leaves me is, I'm with Member Donahue, whereas what I wrote down and circled here on my notepad is "design." I think it deserves another look at the drawing board. I'd be interested, I can't call you the applicant, Kevin, because you guys didn't actually make an application for this change.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, they did.
Oh, did they? Sorry.
Yes, they are the applicant.
Okay. Well, would you mind answering some questions? So have-
Good evening. Just to let everyone know, Kevin Maugh with Lennar, we are the owner developer for the Sherwin-Williams project.
Thank you, Kevin, for introducing yourself. Sometimes, I just figure everyone knows you. You've been in our community for so long. Have you guys discussed looking at design as a way to kind of bridge the gap and see if there's a possibility to keep these trees in place while undergrounding happens? Which, by the way, I want to say I'm in favor of undergrounding. I think there are environmental impacts and safety issues that it covers, so it is something that I like to see, and I think there's a reason why we ask for it in our list of community benefits and why it's high on that list. But please, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think really what it boils down to, what Maru kind of talked about earlier, it's about, you know, when we studied it, so we don't know the exact location of all the utilities in the street, but we have ASBILs. And so our team has worked with PG&E, has worked with the existing utility maps to get the general location of that. And so when they started laying things out, that's when they said, hey, there's a lot of stuff in the street, wet, dry, otherwise, right? And so the concern was that, hey, when we start doing these trenching, right, that we know that we have to do from an undergrounding and new construction standpoint, how much of that is going to impact those existing trees on either side of Horton, right? It's kind of weighing the risk and the reward of the congestion and how much we can go in, because there is a scenario where we could preserve those trees to our biggest abilities, get the joint trench, you know, put the joint trench that is required on our side of the street in.
Are you talking about the sidewalk or the roadway now?
Well, so I think on our side, it would be underneath the roadway, because the sidewalk, to what Councilmember Donahue mentioned, the sidewalk is what, four feet? Or is it five? Do you remember, Mike, offhand, on our side of Horton?
A year and a half?
Yeah.
I think it's eight.
Is it eight?
Seven and a half.
What's that?
It's seven and a half.
Seven and a half. And so it's a fairly narrow sidewalk, because the minimum joint trench width, I believe, I want to say it's three or four feet, right? It's kind of the narrowest trench that you could dig for a joint trench conduit line, right? And so what Councilmember Donahue said is like, hey, if you put that underneath our sidewalk, you're basically eating up the entire, kind of that whole width. And so like any roots that happen in there, is that's where you're going to kind of make those trees susceptible to further poor health and potentially die, right? And so we've kind of worked through all these various scenarios of like, hey, how do these lay out, right? And so what staff presented tonight was that basically the best option that they believe, and, you know, at the end of the day, we're open to trying to save those trees, but the best option to saving the trees on the west side of, or I'm sorry, on the east side of Horton, which are in better shape and there's more of them, is to combine it, right, onto our side of where the joint trench is, because there could be a scenario where if we split the trenches up, which we had originally planned for, that there could be worst-case scenario where trees on either side don't make it, right? And so what we're trying to do is hedge those bets, right? And say, and ultimately what Maru mentioned earlier is that, hey, because, and if the trees on the other side don't make it, that's where the public benefit dollars get put to work to have to replant those trees, right? Whereas on our side, that is part of our project condition, right? And so that's one of the things that she mentioned of like, hey, that's an upside for the city, and that's a cost the developer would bear, right? And so at the end of the day, like if you guys want to do the, you know, there is that option, right? Do trenches on both sides, but the downside is, and maybe the city arborist is, I don't know if he's here tonight, but he could speak more to it, I just think that there's a higher risk of losing both sides of those trees.
So have you gotten far enough into the design process where trenching on both sides would be necessary? If you don't have the exact locations of all of the utilities just yet?
Well, we have a general, we have, like, so with the ASBILs, you know about 80% where all these pipes and lines are. You don't know exactly to the inch, but so when you start actually cutting a section through and seeing how everything's going to fit, that's where the designers and staff came forward and said, hey, I think your best bet is to combine it on our side and leave the other side as kind of untouched as you can.
Right.
But from the undergrounding standpoint, so you can kind of keep those trees in kind of their existing health without putting them to susceptible risk.
So point-blank question, is there further design work that can be done to investigate whether the trenching can be done without doubling up and affecting both sides?
Well, I think that's what we laid out, right, is that we would have the majority of the trench be on our side, right, with minimal trenching going across the street?
Sorry. I guess, to clarify, I mean, in the roadway and not affecting the trees on the west side.
In the-
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, it's a very-
Is there further design work that could let us know whether it would be possible to save all of the trees?
By putting the joint trench in the roadway and not under either sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I think that's the issue, is that it's just too congested. I mean, Mike, you probably have a better sense, and Ryan, of kind of, of that section.
And I know that we have a sense that it's congested, but is there further design work that could be done that would reveal whether or not it's too congested to do that?
I mean, Mike, I mean, what's your sense? I mean, you guys were working with our engineers the most on that. I think, when I talked to our engineers, it was just, hey, it's already congested in there, and it's only going to get more congested with the undergrounding that's happening on both sides of the street, right? And so there's only so much you can foot, put into the existing section, right? And so I think it really comes down to, you know, if we did, we had joint trench on either side to try to save those trees, that the downside is that you're putting each, both sides of the trees in potential risk with new construction.
I understand, but ultimately, my question is, is there a way, is there any room to investigate undergrounding in the roadway?
Undergrounding, I mean, I think we are undergrounding and partially in the roadway, like Mike was saying.
Conduit, yes.
Yeah, the conduit.
But I'm talking about the boxes.
No, well, so PG&E does not allow those boxes to be in the street?
Whatsoever.
No. I believe that's shown in the Green Book.
Okay.
Yeah, because just the high-traffic loads.
All right.
Is the issue.
Okay. Councilmember Pats hasn't gotten to go yet.
Thank you.
So I went back and, I'll go back to it. You know, Scott, you've got me all flummoxed, trying to figure out how you got to Brooklyn from Emeryville. And then I remembered my Bugs Bunny, which is that Bugs Bunny taught me that a tree grows in Brooklyn. This is, all my thinking has been stuck on, so I'm moving forward here. It was September 16th, 2016, is when you guys had the meeting about the trees. And I went back and I watched that video, and Kevin, you were there, and, you know, you said you were open to that design scenario. But it was very clear that the intent was to keep these trees. And I haven't presented with anything to sort of show me that there's a design plan for this, but I even looked back at sort of the agreement, and I think the phrasing that I quote from there is, "In the interest of preserving existing mature trees along Horton Street frontage, it is not possible to comply with the green sidewalk width. However, there's a clear pedestrian path of eight feet." Seven and a half I got from a little section earlier. So my question is, if we're going to tear out the trees, does that mean you're going to then comply with the green sidewalk ordinance part?
I can respond to that. The thinking was, and actually what's shown in the PUD amendment, the green street designation actually goes down 45th Street, and then it jogs on Horton Street and goes over to Sherwin Avenue and then across Sherwin Avenue. So it's only the segment of Horton Street between Sherwin and 45th that is designated as a green street. South and north of that, it is not. So the thinking at this point is, it would look kind of funny to have the, and the sidewalk width for a green street is wider than the sidewalk width for a non-green street.
Eleven and a half.
So if we were to strictly comply with those guidelines, you would have a sidewalk that was a foot or two wider, meaning the curb would be further out into the street between Sherwin Avenue and 45th Street, and then it would jog back over and be, you know, the street would then be wider, and the roadway would be wider, and the sidewalk would be narrower north of 45th Street. To the average person walking down the street, that would look kind of odd, and if the answer was given that, well, that was to comply with where there was a line on the- on the general plan map, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So the thinking at this point is just to keep it to the standard sidewalk width for the whole length of it.
So I guess my, my point in all of this is, I, I'm just not seeing at a point where you even tried. I'm not seeing any designs. I sort of see just a chance to save money, put them under the sidewalk. I'd like to see some designs where you put them under the roadway. I don't think, I think it's kind of a straw man argument to talk about the trees on the east side. You really, I, just looking at the, at the design drawing, there's lots of places, even if you, there's a whole new road going through the middle of the development. Did you explore putting them under that road, under the new sidewalk where all new trees will be? Is there a reason that utility lines have to go down Horton?
Yes, because they serve all of the properties that are adjacent to Horton Street.
So you're going through the roadway to the other side?
Yes. I mean, you currently, if you look up in the air, you see the telephone poles with the wires between them. And then they have drops that come down to the various buildings.
Right.
Well, those drops are then going to be underground. So if you put it on a different street, somehow you have to get service over to the buildings where the phone poles used to be.
Yeah. So that's, that's my point, though, is you're, you're going through the street anyways with those drops. Right? They're not going to still be up in the air. You're going to be going across the street with the drops.
Right.
And so there's plenty of places to put the boxes along the new building without having to disturb the trees. I think it'll take a little effort, but you can do that. So I'd like to see some designs. So that's my recommendation is to, second, what you guys have said, which is, no, go back and try again. Come up with a plan to save the trees.
Okay. I've got some comments here on really, just wait. You've got something, Andrew?
When you're ready, I just want to give an update on the status of the project.
Can you use a microphone, Andrew?
Just to give a status of the project and what it means if no action is taken tonight, how the project proceeds forward.
Okay. Well, I'll wrap it, Mike. Do you want to go ahead and give that information? Yeah, give it now and then I'll give my comments with that information.
So what we have is the council has adopted this PUD ordinance, which approves the PDP. Subsequent to that, the planning commission has approved the vesting tentative map for this project. The vesting tentative map is based on the PDP. After the VTM, the planning commission has then approved two final FDPs. One for the parks and open space and one for the buildings. And all of these subsequent actions are based on the PDP. Following all of those, the developer and the city have begun the process of doing certain improvement agreements based on all these following entitlements that I've just described. So for example, the council has approved the park and open space improvement agreement. And also at the staff level pursuant to the Emeryville municipal code, we are getting to, we are getting ready to approve the phase one improvement agreement. If no action is taken tonight by the council, the developer continues to proceed according to the existing entitlements. And the staff is obligated to process what is given to the city. So it's a long way of saying that there's really not a lot of time to necessarily study this and that the developer can continue with the PDP as it exists.
I'm just going to ask the question, I'm sure my colleague's also in here. Is there two weeks?
Well, we, we are getting ready to approve the final map. There's one document we are waiting for.
Can you talk about the net effects of us not moving forward with approving an amendment tonight? So is, are you saying that we're not going to get benefits that we negotiated?
No, it's just that, under all of these entitlements, as the developer brings things forward, staff has to proceed under the existing PUD and PDP and all of the other entitlements. So for example, with the final map that comes in and we have to execute a phase one improvement agreement that is, that basically requires the developer to put in some of these public improvements. Once they give this last document, we then have to approve the final map. Now, there is a contingency in place, assuming the council, you know, if the council was to adopt.
I'm sorry, Andrew, take it a step back. So what is the net effect? Is the net effect that we can't get the improvement we asked for?
Well, the improvement that you've asked for is the undergrounding of the trees.
Yes.
So you still get that. But then what happens, and this was put forward in Maru's staff presentation, the alternative is, is that they will just go to the planning commission for the tree removal on the east side.
Right. But we can appeal that decision if they grant it and not let them remove those trees.
You could do that.
Right. So, and then you would just go to the next conditional, a benefit, right, on the list? And most of those on that list are a lot of undergrounding on streets that have trees.
Correct.
So in other words, if we said no and no to the east side, some of the others that appeared as negative numbers in that list might be done. Is that right?
If it became impossible to fulfill, let's say, number one, for whatever reason, then it would move to number two.
Okay.
And then from there, if there's money left, onto three, and then four, and then five, and so on.
And I think as the vice mayor indicated, that there are trees on some of those other streets as well that might also be compromised by that undergrounding. But I mean, we'll have to see. Well, those improvement plans will obviously have to be done as well.
And I believe, if I remember correctly, Charlie, if any funds that are left over for community benefits for this project, so let's say for whatever reason, none of the undergrounding can be done because it's impossible to do, all the funding would go to the capital, capital improvement project for the bridge, correct?
Right, the South Bay Front Bridge. Any money that, so if you get down the list and you don't have enough money to do the next project on the list, but you do have something left, then that something goes to the South Bay Front Bridge.
Okay. And just to clarify, the developer's going to be spending this money anyway, right? They're on the hook for it. So even if they underground it here, remove these trees, or do it across the street, the developer's spending the same amount of money, just to clarify.
Same amount of community benefits.
Community benefits money. However, if we have them do it on the side of Horton Street with the 11 trees, the east side, west side, the west side, cardinal directions, then they already have to do trenching, they are already on the hook to replace the sidewalk. So that might actually save us community benefit money that can go towards a different project. Is that correct?
Actually, yes. But, yes. And just, just, if I may, just to clarify a, what I think is a misperception about the undergrounding is that the developer may be trying to save money or if you require him to do something else, he'll, the developer will then have to spend more of his own money. It's actually the money we are getting through community benefits that we're talking about here. So frankly, I don't think the developer is really all that concerned about how much the various options cost. Because he's on the hook to spend a fixed amount of money on community benefits and he's going to spend it one way or the other, however we require the undergrounding to be done.
Okay. If I can give my comments in the movie, we can continue asking stuff. All right. Oh, and, all right. So I think we have a few options here tonight. We can either accept this amendment, we can reject it unilaterally and just have it go down to the east side of the street or a different community benefit project. Or we can come up with, you know, conditions of accepting this that we like. We have that authority to do as well. And those conditions can include asking engineers to go back in and really do, you know, a thorough study on the street and seeing if there's any way they could fit that in, with also an eye towards future development and would this be completely taking up every single inch of space in that street? We could also have them look into what would be the cost of putting in non-lollipop trees, which I hear is a concern. I think you can buy a bigger tree. Is that correct? You can buy bigger trees?
Well, yes. And you might want to hear from the arborist on that. I think generally it's recommended to not plant mature trees.
But like adolescent trees or something, I don't know.
Right, right. I mean, you want to plant the biggest trees you possibly can, but you're going to plant a younger tree so it will grow better than an older tree.
And, you know, putting in structural soil and whatnot so they can reach bigger. So what I'm curious about is, you know, maybe the arborist can come speak to this, is the trees that are weaker on the west side of the street, is there a type of tree we could put in at a stage of growth with better soil conditions that would very quickly reach those, the same parity with those on the other side of the street and give us a nice looking streetscape? This, the arborist?
Yeah, Molly Batshelder, the city arborist, will can address that.
Yes, hi. Good question. The idea is to provide a volume of soil for a tree so it could reach the, the size it's supposed to, the size it can be at maturity. So if you plant a tree in compacted soil, if you plant a tree with little room for the roots to grow, they're either going to circle around in a hole or they're going to find sort of the interface of the pavement and the, and the soil and uplift the pavement as what happened on the east side of the street. The trees weren't planted correctly, but this is, this is in the past. What Emeryville is doing now is providing a rootable soil volume with oxygen and soil and, and water capacity so that the roots can actually fly through the soil. And if the roots are actually able to go, grow fast, then the canopy is going to reflect that. I think a lot of times we get very used to seeing very sickly trees in our urban landscapes just because they're not planted correctly. But if you provide the soil, like a coaslive oak, for example, if you give that coaslive oak 1,500 cubic feet of rootable soil, so with structural soil, with different ways that the roots can, you know, access, that tree can grow so fast you wouldn't believe.
How fast?
Well, coaslive oaks, I mean, they're, they're a very fast growing tree. My father has one that he grew from a seed about 15 years ago and it's 30 feet tall now. So, yeah, I mean, I just feel like that, again, we get used to seeing the, like, why doesn't our urban forest grow? This tree has been the same size. But then you go, look, and either we haven't selected a good specimen, maybe the roots have, are circling in the, in the containers. And then we plant it and then the roots continue to circle. You go up to the tree and you shake it and it walks back and forth. So that tree's never going to do well. So if we can, you know, plant a well-grown tree and, you know, we like the 24-inch box-sized trees, the 15-gallon trees, sometimes they get damaged by the, you know, vandalism. Any size bigger, you have, there's more maintenance that's required and more room for failure because the root size is not the same as the canopy size. You want to get a tree that has about this, similar. So you, you can have a, like a two-year establishment period and then the roots can actually, you know, then you can just leave it alone after. So anyway, does that answer your question?
My question was really, if we, you know, for a variety of reasons, chose to go forth and do the undergrounding in a way where we had to take out these 11 trees, is it possible, and what's the timeframe, that it would be possible to get trees that would be nice looking, non-little lollipop trees on that side of the street if we replaced the soil and everything?
Well, for example, you have Park Street, the, the west side of Park Street. And that was planted in 2010, I believe, 2009, 2010, when it came. And, and I don't know if you use structural soil, but you did give those trees a very good amount of soil volume. And you look at those London Plain trees now and they are 20 feet tall possibly with, with pretty good sized calipers. That was a successful planting. So that, so that is, that, you know, we understand the reasons why trees don't grow. We understand the reasons why they lift up pavement. So if we, so if we could not make those same mistakes again, provide soil volume where the, the roots can grow out, they, they do grow fast. And you can have, what they say in about 20 years, if you plant a tree correctly, can, can begin to give back all the benefits and all the costs that you put into that tree at the time of planting. So it does take a little bit of time. But we're planting trees for the future. So if we plant trees well, 50, 100 years, that tree is still, is still going to be here. If we cut a whole bunch of roots trying to save a tree to underground utilities, that tree is going to be, you know, here for what? Another five or 10 years before we have to take it out? This is what I see.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, yeah, my comments are really that if we can maybe create conditions that move forward that look at further designer view, or perhaps if we absolutely have to take out those trees, putting in better trees that are not going to be teensy tiny for 20 years, I would be interested in exploring those options. But I think I've got some additional comments over here.
No, I just want, you know, I've got, what I'm hearing from staff is that we're going to get, you know, possibly applications to underground in other places. Where I'm looking at the trees on Horton right now, they're not the healthiest trees that we have in the city. But there are trees in surround, on surrounding streets that are in even better condition than these, which are not that bad. And I, I feel like if we, we might just be kicking the can and having the same conversation on another street where there's no opportunity to have sidewalk that's being reconstructed without using community benefit funds. So is it, as much as it pains me to let these trees go, because obviously I made a concerted effort to keep these trees. Like I said at the beginning, I'm not willing to support them at, 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 for, for every circumstance. So as I also said, I am, I am a fan of undergrounding and we're not going to get another opportunity where we have a developer who's on the hook for undergrounding in the specific area. So this is, this is a really tough one for me. I like what you brought up in terms of having the arborist talk about a supportive environment for new trees that may be planted young but may not be lollipops in the future. And last, it matters to me if a tree's going to last 50, 100 years. Rather than cosmetically looking at what appears to be a nice mature tree now, that matters to me if, even if we're, if we were, if we had a fantasy world where we could trench in the roadway, but we still cut the roots of some of these tree systems, we could still be compromising trees on both sides of this street if we had our fantasy scenario of undergrounding. So this is a very complicated issue. I'm, I'm, I'm looking for a compromise. And it sounds like you're, you're willing to propose one or another.
Yeah, I guess I have one final thing I want staff to clarify. How much money is the community benefit on the east side of Horton? You know, how much money could we be potentially losing if we decide to not go forward with doing it on the west side and move it to the east side? Like, what's our cost benefit there?
But don't we have healthier trees on the east side?
No, I'm saying, so if we refuse to cut down these trees and they move it to the other side, we're risking those, those trees, but we're also losing money.
Yes.
Because.
Oh, you're just wanting, no, you want quantify? Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if we have that information. I mean, this is the, this is, let's see. The estimate for undergrounding.
1.8 million.
1.8 million. It says east side. That means the existing overhead wires on the east side
Okay.
of, of Horton between Park and 46th is 1.8 million. Now, that's just a rough ballpark estimate that was made when the PUD was approved. So we would get a sense of, you know, order of magnitude of all these different things. I don't know what the cost differential would be between doing it on one side of the street versus the other.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you're asking between east and west on Horton?
Yeah, and including what the developer is already supposed to do in terms of redoing the sidewalk on the west side.
Okay, just the valuation of the trees, though.
Oh, I know, it's like $50,000 difference.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Would my other councilmembers be interested in maybe moving forward with a, a conditional approval of this amendment with further designer view of what's underneath in the street and seeing if it's at all possible to keep this on the west side, doing the conduit in the street and just putting in the boxes? And what are your thoughts on that?
Yes. Meaning, yeah, take up a chunk of the street, go down and see what's there. And if it's possible to.
And if it's not possible, then this amendment would move forward and they could remove those trees, underground it there. We'd accept this community benefit.
Well, if it's not possible, I would like to
Well, if it's not possible, I would like to consider all the other possibilities. We have this big list of other, other things where our money could go towards.
We're, we're, we're talking about a lot of other sidewalk and undergrounding where we would lose the benefit of a sidewalk, sidewalk that's already being reconstructed and there are going to be other trees at risk in these places. We're just going to be, we're going to be looking at the same thing again.
That's right, but the other trees, uh, might not matter as much as here because here you have an old building and old trees. In the other locations, you might have, uh, like a concrete tilt up and a bunch of lollipops right now that don't really matter as much. You know, we, it, I'd, I'd rather look at that later.
I, I, and the other thing is, we're not necessarily going to have the opportunity except on appeal to look at it. Planning Commission could do this.
True, true, but I'm, I'm willing to appeal and look at it.
Okay. Question?
Conditional approval means the trees are coming down. So I, I think we're kidding ourselves if they're going to take a peek and say, oh, yep, this works. They've made up their mind what they want to do and that's what's going to happen. And it sounds like that's the choice we have. We can either knock down these trees or we can move to the next item on the list. So.
And the next item of the list would be 40th Street Sidewalking Utility Undergrounding, which on Hubbard, sorry, Hubbard Street Sidewalking Utility Undergrounding. Are there trees there?
Technically, it's 45th until we get to the negatives.
So if we could take a step back, if we did move forward with this amendment and we asked for conditions where, um, the applicant worked with our arborist to make sure that we had those conditions that she just described to us, where a tree could mature and actually thrive, you know, in the next 50, 100 years, is that, is that a place you could go?
So the issue wasn't about the quality of the trees. The issue was, was we determined these were mature trees, that we wanted to keep mature trees. Um, you know, I, I hope Scott lives another 40 years to see lollipops grow up, but, uh, the odds are not with him. So.
Brutal.
105, it's a big ask. Uh, you know, so, uh, I'm frustrated because I don't like, you know, I don't like to be given a Hobson's choice and that's what we have here.
I agree, that's what we have and I'm trying to make the best of it. Um, so, you know, we heard from our arborist who is, is speaking on our behalf, that what she's seeing is trees that aren't giving the opportunity, being given the opportunity to thrive and we have the opportunity, if we need to take these trees down, we need to take, if we need to take tree, if we want undergrounding.
Right.
We're going to need to take some trees down, it sounds like. So, and, and it would be great if we had time to study this.
Okay, I have a proposal. Horton Street, number six, you can look at. If you change this and show the overall plan is there, we're undergrounding in front of that concrete tilt up. Great idea. See number six right there?
The problem is that's number six on the list.
Well, yeah, we can.
Yeah, I have to, the, the, the map and the number, the numbers on the map and the numbers on the list don't correspond, but they are in the same order.
Right. So, but here's the thing, if we don't do this project, that doesn't mean that instead that automatically happens. It has to go through two, three, four, five first.
Right. Currently, what we're anticipating, uh, and this could change based on, uh, how much these things cost and how much, the, the money they have to spend up here is a percentage of the construction valuation of the project. So that could change if the construction valuation changes and all these estimates could change, you know, depending on how much these things end up costing. But we're anticipating at this point that we will be able to get down to number four on this list and not do five, six, and seven.
So I, I, I say let's, uh, say no and we'll just have the planning commission not choose the, uh, east side of the street, but go further down the list at some other place just because, uh, I don't see, you know, you get rid of these trees that are functioning well, I don't see the advantages being that great. I think we can get, uh, more for our money further down the list. So that's what I am suggesting.
I disagree, we're not going to be getting more for our money, we're not going to be getting the benefit of a sidewalk that's already being reconstructed without community benefits. And I, I, I really think that, um, the prudent choice would be to go forward with this and ask the developer to, um, as a condition, to, um, create the conditions for, for trees to mature, um, in this place. And again, I, I, I say this as something that pains me greatly to let any tree, um, go in this community, but this, this is a, I, I see the value of the undergrounding and I don't see us having another opportunity to get someone else to pay for it.
Okay, well, can we, can we redirect back to what is at hand, which is not number six, but this amendment?
Can I ask Mr. Geno a question?
Yes.
So I'm going to make an assumption here that Member Martinez makes a motion, it gets seconded by Vice Mayor Medina, and then the vote comes out two, two. How does that fly?
So if, if there is a vote of two, two, then the amendment does not get approved and instead what you are left with, or what the city is left with, is the original PUD, PDP conditions, which show that the, um, undergrounding, that the, uh, I'm sorry, that the trees would be removed, um, on the east side of the.
The healthier trees.
The healthier trees would come down.
And it'll cost us more.
And, um, I would remind the city council that, um, the tree removal permit for that has already been approved by the planning commission and that decision is already final.
You mean, there's no appeal to that?
Say that again.
So as indicated by Charlie in his presentation, that the planning commission's action included, uh, the, uh, tree removal permit for the trees on the east side of Sherwin-Williams. And, um, is that correct? I'm, I'm, the, the west side.
Yeah, the.
I'm sorry, the west side.
Commission approval is for removal on the west.
The west side, I'm sorry, the west side, the west side, I'm sorry about that. So the, the planning commission, the planning commission approval is for, the planning commission approved the tree removal permit for the trees on the west side and that decision is final. So we would be left with the tree removal.
No undergrounding.
On the west side. Correct?
Planning Commission's tree removal permit is contingent on the council approval of the PDP, PUD. So if, uh, if it's a two, two and the PDP does not go forward, then the tree removal permit that the commission approved does not go forward because it's contingent on your approval.
Right.
Okay. Do we have a motion? I think we've all debated this for a long time.
No, I, I, I would like further clarification from our city attorney on what happened, what are the cascading effects of, um, yeah. Sorry, please.
Okay. Let me take a step back.
Call it.
If the, if the, if the amendment before you tonight does not get approved, then what we are left with is the original PUD, PDP approvals as is, right? And what, what kicks in at that point? And so that, and I'm going to have Charlie help me out here as I sort of walk you out on this, right? So as you have the original, according to the original PUD, PDP approvals, um, we are showing that the undergrounding, um, is taking place on, on Horton Street.
Well, the PUD doesn't show where the undergrounding occurs. I mean, it, it has this list of community benefits. The, the crux of it is it has a landscape plan that shows existing trees to remain. And the, the amendment, technically, the amendment to this PUD is simply to change the landscape plan to show new trees where the current landscape plan shows existing trees. That's the only change.
Okay, to, so in other words, if, if, if it's a no vote, the money would be spent elsewhere. The undergrounding would not occur on that block. The community benefits money would be spent somewhere else.
That's, go ahead.
So one of the alternative action, if you, if the council does not want to approve is that, let me just, is basically that the undergrounding of, uh, utilities on Horton Street is part of the conditions of approval. If the council does do nothing, then the undergrounding, that condition remains and therefore, uh, the applicant will start designing the undergrounding with, uh, on the east side. And then we would come back.
To the planning commission.
To the planning commission for, you know, and at that time we will have precisely how many trees will, will be affected. So that's what will happen.
So in, in other words, this is truly a Hobson's choice. There's no way we cannot underground on that block, is what you're saying.
Without impacting the trees.
Well, and, and without amending the conditions of approval.
Without amending the conditions.
Conditions of approval call for that undergrounding. So we'd have to amend the conditions to not have that undergrounding. May I make a suggestion, Vice Mayor Medina?
Please do.
It's, I think we all need more information. What I'm hearing from all of you tonight is that you, uh, you would like to have more information, that, that, uh, the exact location of the utilities in the street is not precisely known and with more design work, it might be possible to put the trench in the street if not the utility boxes that do have to go in the sidewalk. I think it would be helpful to you and to staff, uh, to have further design work done to figure out as definitively as we can what is feasible and what is not feasible and then bring it back to you after that and continue the item for that.
And what I would add to that is if the developer or if the applicant is okay with that suggestion as well.
I believe that he is. Uh, I don't, do you want to speak to that, Kevin?
Yeah, I think we are, we are open to that study because I think the, what I mentioned to, to staff earlier is just that we just need to, from a timing standpoint for our financing, is to have the final map and the improvement agreement, um, executed. And then whatever we decide on this, we can just make it a, a staff level revision to those improvement plans because it's, it's a small piece of the map and the improvement agreement. So if everybody's on board with that, we're fine studying it. So I think ultimately what we could do is that we, we come back to you guys with a scenario that says, okay, so if we want to put this on the west side, here's where these boxes would locate it and here's the trees that would be impacted. And then at that point, either planning commission or city council could say, of these 30, you know, whatever, 12, 11, 15, 18 would have, would be impacted, is that what the city wants to do? Or do we go down the list of the, of the public benefit agreement? Does that sound right to you guys in terms of how that would play out?
I think so.
Okay, so the motion would be to continue and we'd get that result?
Right.
I recognize Christian has had his hand up.
So one other piece of information I'd like to have is, it seems to me that the knowledge, we wanted to save the trees and we wanted the undergrounding to happen. And I'm not an architect, I'm not a designer, but it seems to me that somebody should have realized those two things didn't seem compatible at some point in the approval process. So I'd love to sort of have a, a review or a conversation since we know that likelihood was going to occur, why didn't we foresee this as a challenge when we did the conditions of approval? So I just put some thought into that and maybe review the process of, you know, it surprises me, we have all of these people coming together and nobody sort of put together the piece of information that we want underground utilities, we want to save the trees and that's going to line up with some problems later on. So that's the other piece.
I move to continue this item.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Let's, let's call the vote.
Do we want to talk about a date to continue it to?
They don't, uh, the council does not have to, um, continue it to a date certain, although they have the option to do that. Um, if they do not continue it to a date certain, then we would just have to renotice this as a new public hearing.
Which I, that's not a huge problem.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so moved by Councilmember Donahue, seconded by Councilmember Martinez to continue the item. Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Medina?
No.
And, uh, Mayor Bowers is recused.
Item 11.2 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville establishing updated development impact fees for fiscal year 2018, 19. Charlie Bryant.
See, I'm going to go in a chair accident.
Mayor Bowers and members of the city council, you have before you a resolution to establish the, uh, development impact fees updated for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Uh, this includes the affordable housing impact fee, the parks and recreation impact fee and the transportation impact fee. Uh, as we do every year, the fees have been escalated by the difference in the engineering news record construction cost index for San Francisco from March of this year, from March of last year to March of this year. And that percent increase this year was 3.49%, so roughly 3.5%. All of the fees have been increased by that percentage in the chart that is attached to the resolution that is before you. We are recommending approval of this fee increase.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Members, do you have clarifying questions? Hearing none, this is a public hearing. The time is nine o'clock PM. Public hearing is open. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item are afforded three minutes to do so. Seeing none, time is nine o'clock. The public hearing is closed. I will turn to my left to discuss, uh, Vice Mayor Medina.
Right. Honestly, I'm ready to make a motion.
Member Pats?
I will second her motion.
Member Donahue? You're ready?
Ready to go with that.
Member Martinez?
I'll just make a short comment that, um, it's important that we, um, keep our fees in line with where they need to be so that folks aren't, um, shocked and surprised when we get them to where they need to be to recover our costs as a city. So, um, it's important to have this exercise every year and, um, I'm, I'm ready to support this.
Uh, thank you, staff, for doing this report. I have a motion by, what, well, do I have a motion?
Yep, so moved.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Pats to approve this. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor, Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville adopting the community grant subcommittee recommendations to select nine different recipients. I won't read them all because it's long. Uh, and Pedro, are you going to introduce this item?
Yes. Would you like a presentation or?
Counsel, would you like a presentation or would you like presentation waived?
Presentation waived.
Waived.
Waived, waived. Uh, presentation has been waived, Pedro. So, um, members of the public, I know that most of you, thank you for waiting, have been here for this item. If you wish to speak, um, I don't have any comment cards and there's not one required to speak tonight, so what I will do is, uh, open this for public comment. Every person who wishes to speak will have three minutes to speak. Um, just step to the podium. If you want to speak on an item, you can just wait in line behind them by a few feet. And so this matter is open for public comment at this time. Judy.
And if people could say their names if they want to.
If you could say your name for the city clerk so she can keep the minutes, that's appreciated.
Hi, I'm Judy Wetterer with Wareham Development here tonight as a board member of the Berkeley Film Foundation. We are most grateful to the city of Emeryville for its $10,000 grant to BFF in 2017. BFF submitted again this year and unfortunately, we learned that our grant will not be recommended to you tonight by the community grant subcommittee. Because our 2017 grant appeal was made directly to the city council, we did not understand that our 2018 grant application would be reviewed by a subcommittee before it went to you. I happened to be at that, uh, subcommittee, um, meeting in support of another grant application for the Emeryville Historical Society. Had BFF understood that our grant was being reviewed along with 21 other grants that evening, I certainly would have spoken on behalf of BFF and we certainly would have brought along at least one Emeryville filmmaker who has benefited from the BFF as we have done tonight. We are especially worried that this turn of events might somehow be interpreted by the city as BFF taking your generosity for granted or not recognizing the vital role that Emeryville plays in the expansion of the BFF into the regional east shore grant and education program. Nothing could be further from the truth. Since 2009, BFF has awarded 1.3 million to more than 120 filmmakers who live or work in the east shore from Richmond to Oakland. The editing and support jobs those films feed are vital to the independent filmmaking industry in the region. In total, 22. the region. In total, 22 applications from Emeryville filmmakers have been received by the BFF to date. And nearly half of those were awarded grants totaling $102,000. Your 2017 grant went to two Emeryville filmmakers, Pratip Parma for My Name is Andrea, and to Peter Lee Pan Lee's film, Don't Be a Hero. As a result of the grant, Don't Be a Hero got the attention of the 2018 Sundance Film Festival, and was screened as a U.S. narrative short film. How great was that? Rick Tahita Flores, who is here tonight, is another Emeryville BFF grant winner. His beautiful film, My Bolivia, was screened in December at the BFF screening series in Oakland, and was awarded two BFF grants before its, towards its completion, which is, Rick is also a sought-after editor on other BFF-awarded films when he's not working on his own films. In conclusion, we are grateful to Mayor Bauders for his presence last night at the BFF screening of Welcome to the Neighborhood, and for promoting the Emeryville screening of Dogtown Redemption and Trash We Trust. And thank you also to then-Mayor Donahue for his support and presence at our last event celebrating filmmakers. We hope you'll reconsider our grant, and we look forward to sharing many other grants with you and events. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Graham Lustig. I'm the artistic director of the Oakland Ballet. On behalf of my company, I'm honored to stand here before you this evening in consideration of your grant, to help us bring dance into your schools. The Oakland Ballet currently serves around 20,000 students, from El Chorito, Haywood, out to Livermore, but we do not yet include Emeryville. We'd be honored to come here to provide dance services for your students and for your community, with programs like Luna Mexicana, which is a Day of the Dead performance, The Nutcracker, of course, and also Jangala, which is a fusion of Indian dance and ballet to tell stories from the Jungle Book. I encourage you to approve our support, and we will work diligently with you to provide the best service for all ages of your community, including seniors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham.
Hello, my name is Joey Enes. I'm here talking on behalf of the Emeryville Historical Society. We're seeking funding to digitize the Emeryville Historical Society photography collection and journals that Donald Hauser has been working on for roughly 30 years.
Thirty years.
My family's history goes back to Emeryville over 100 years. I'm, have been introduced with Don and his work, working on an oral history project on the Emeryville Mud Flat sculptures, that we received a Cal Humanities Grant with CCA. And as of right now, the, Don's work and collection is not easily accessible to the public. And so, what we would seek is to digitize that collection and make it available for the public, and hopefully create new content as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Joey.
My name is Don Hauser, and I'm the co-founder of the Emeryville Historical Society. We organized in 1988, and over the last three decades, we've collected thousands of photographs, historical photographs of Emeryville. So, we'd like to set up a website, so that we can scan these photos, so they'll be available to the public. Also, since 1990, we published a newsletter that's quarterly, and over the last 29 years, we published about 110 newsletters, each one about 16 to 20 pages long, representing 1,500 pages of history. So, we want the newsletters to be scanned, so that they'll be online and available to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks. Rob Arias, also want to add that a lot of the printing for these journals have been coming out of Don's pocket for years now. He's been subsidizing Emeryville's history. So, I think it's, it'd be diligent to step up and help provide some funding for him, and also preserve these memories, you know, for the entire community for years to come, we hope. So, I also wanted to thank Frances Williams, she had to leave earlier, but she's Friends of the Emeryville Senior Center president, and endorses this project wholeheartedly, as well as Marilyn Fullbreath. I'm also here to support the Tiny Toes Program for the Emeryville Child Development Center. I'm on the board there. We just launched the website, friendsofecdc.org. We're looking to kind of supplement some of the programs there with programs like this. You know, there's been some challenges at the ECDC, and we want to do our best to promote and encourage new programs, you know, so that new families coming on board know what we're doing, and are encouraged to keep attending the ECDC. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Shirocky, and I'm representing JSA. We're a new organization that moved to Emeryville in April of 2016, and we were formerly in Berkeley. We have a new facility, and we're really excited to be considered as part of this grant program. We will be hosting an exhibit entitled A Place of Our Own with the Asian American Women Artists Association. It will be on display for six weeks, open every day, Monday through Friday, with gallery hours on Saturday and Sunday, and over six public events, lectures, and gallery showings and receptions. So, we hope that you'll, well, we appreciate your consideration of this, and we hope that you will come by and join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jill. Hi, Rick.
Good evening, Council and President. My name is Rick Tahita Flores. I'm an Emeryville resident for 20 years. I've been a filmmaker for almost 50 years, and most of my productions have been for PBS, the Smithsonian Institution, the British Museum, and cable networks. I've been around a long time, and I have always raised money for my films, and it used to be much easier than it is now. There's no money for anything. I used to laugh at people who took 10 years to make a film. Now, it's the standard. So, there's less money, that's one of the reasons. Foundations have cut back. There are more applicants, and there's sort of a mistaken belief that if you have an iPhone, you can make a movie, which, it's only the beginning. Also, on the issue of funding, there are almost, when organizations fund films, they almost exclusively fund films that will have a national impact and a national broadcast. There are almost no local film organizations that fund local filmmakers, and I think that's a huge service that Berkeley Film Foundation does. I'm a recipient of two grants from the Berkeley Film Foundation for a film that I finished a year ago called My Bolivia: Remembering What I Never Knew, which I couldn't do with an iPhone, because I had to take a crew to Bolivia five times. And they came in with money at the beginning of my film, and they came money at the end of my film, and I literally could not have done that film without their support. The film ran on PBS last October. So, I think that's a tribute to what they've done. And I also want to mention one other thing, too. This is, the Berkeley Film Foundation funds films all around the Bay Area. If it's not possible to get Emeryville's money and support this, Emeryville will be the only city of that group that benefits from it without supporting it. And I think that feels a little out of balance. I urge you to, as I said, no one knew that, we didn't clearly understand that it was going to the committee as opposed to the council. And I urge you to consider seeing if there's some discretionary funding at the council level to continue the support, because it does make a difference. Emeryville has a great history of supporting the arts. The arts are a moving target. They're changing. And there is no, there's no support for film as an art in Emeryville. There are no classes, there are no screenings, there are no exhibition spaces. This is a way to continue the support for the arts that Emeryville is so good at. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brendan DeFrisco. I represent California Poets in the Schools. I've been a resident teaching artist with them for the past few years, recent graduate with my master's in creative writing. Honored to be recommended to the council for the first grant I've ever written.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. California Poets in the Schools is the oldest in-school residency art, writing, creative writing program in California. I've had the pleasure of working with them for the last five years, and I look forward to the possibility of expanding our ongoing relationship with the Emeryville Center of Community Life, where I am currently teaching there as well. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Hi, Regina.
Good evening. I'm so happy to see all of you, and I know you want to go home soon. I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate so much the consideration for CALA's grant. And I'm Archana Horsting. I've lived in Emeryville about 40 years, and I co-founded CALA Art Institute about 44 years ago. And I am very happy to be working with Pedro and the recreation program, which allows us to work with many of the same students that we work with during the year, in our other programs that are funded both by Wareham and the school district. So, with this gives us a chance to stay in people's lives, and make a deeper connection to the artists that we're working with. So, I really appreciate it. And I do want to put in a pitch for the Film Foundation, because they've done really good work, and I know so many artists that have benefited from it. And I'm sure that we'll be showing their films at the new, new art center when that day occurs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Regina. Hi, Sharon.
Hi, good evening. Sharon Wilsher, community liaison for the 45th Street Artists Cooperative. And we're currently in our 36th year of our Emeryville Youth Art Program at Emery Unified. And I think that you all, probably all enjoyed March's Youth Art Month with the display that just came down. And our professional artists have provided several different disciplines over all these, over these decades. The last couple of years have been an in-depth ceramics program at the high school, and this year, we were able to serve grade six through 12, bringing professional artists, ceramic artists into the classroom, supplies, and then also providing additional art supplies. And I know that it's, the students have all been thrilled to have the supplies that we've been able to provide them. And I also am representing tonight Nancy Carpen dancers. Nancy is out of the country and asked me to be here, and I mentioned to Pedro that, and she also was in touch with Pedro. Nancy has been, had a dance program in the schools since 1982, but your grant last year helped her to expand that program, and she reached fourth graders with a many-weeks program. And this year, she'd like to expand that to 10 weeks, and reaching second and third graders. So, your support means a great deal to these programs, and for, at least for Nancy's and for ours, you really would keep us going. So, thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Christina Britia, and I'm one of the applicants, along with Vicky Josol, for the grant for the community garden to create a rainwater harvesting, you know, tank and sculpture, and just sort of artistically enhance rainwater catchment. And thank you for considering us for that grant. We just feel it's really important to educate people about harvesting rainwater, and using it in their gardens for irrigation, so that we can alleviate some of the pressure on the rivers and the water that would like to stay out in nature, helping the salmon and the surgeon. And the more we can catch rainwater and use it instead of East Bay mud water, the better, I think. So, thanks for the consideration.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm representing We Perform Oric. My name's Andrew Ting. We are very excited to be working with the city, with the RIC program, to provide a summer camp for our students in the community. And throughout the Bay Area, we'll be hosting two camps, string camp and guitar ukulele camp. And 100% of the grant will be going towards the scholarship to fund the camp. Many of our students need the support to fulfill their dream, to learn music. And so, We Perform Oric has been around since 2007. It's a nonprofit organization, and our mission is to raise self-confidence through performing arts. And performing arts does include music, or sports, anything, any endeavor that takes effort and just work. And so, we're excited to be, to be working with the city to make this happen. And so, I myself will be one of the teachers at the camp. And just thank you for the support and for your consideration. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Andrew.
So, I just want to say, I've lived here for 37 years, and for that entire time, I have been an acquaintance of Archana Horsting, who's the co-founder of CALA. And I'd like to encourage you guys to fund CALA. I think sometimes we lose sight, like CALA is really the jewel of the East Bay, I mean, for the arts community. And, I mean, it's internationally known. I mean, and the quality of the programming is just, you know, the highest possible. My daughter has benefited. I've benefited over the years, many, a lot. I think just CALA, sometimes we sort of lose sight, and perspective about how special CALA is, and it's in our midst, and I really think that it's, we should value it and support it. And I've known Archana to, you know, struggle a lot, to keep it funded properly. And it seems like she spends an inordinate amount of time, like, trying to chase dollars, which, you know, I guess is pretty normal in that field of work. But, I mean, to have CALA, like, you know, to shrink, or to, you know, or even worse, like, to collapse, it would be, you know, just an enormous tragedy. I just think we should, you know, keep, we should place a lot of importance on CALA, and how special it is, and I just encourage you to fund it tonight. Thanks.
Any other members of the public wish to comment? Seeing none, we will discuss. I would like to begin with Member Pats.
So, I spent some time on this item, because this is one of my favorite parts of this job. You know, and I say that as someone who's, is the ballet gentleman still here? I'm not a fan of ballet, but I'm excited-
I am, don't worry.
What?
We'll get to me, don't worry.
Yeah. But I'm excited to bring it to kids, because I know it's not about what I like, but it's about really working with the community. And I work at a school for the arts, and I see what ballet does for so many of my students. You know, and I'm going to pick on the poet, too, if he's still here. Again, you're hitting the things that are outside of my wheelhouse. I lost interest in poetry when Dorothy Parker passed. So, it tells you my interests. But again, I know for kids, that's an important thing. And so, one of the things I really loved about reading these grants was just how much community involvement, and how much we're connecting to, be it ECDC or the Emory Schools. It's great to me that we have these partnerships and this impact. That said, there was one that was not like the other, the others. And so, I think I'll, you know, I was given pause when I looked at the Historical Society's grant application. I was, one, surprised it made it pass the staff screening. There were a lot of just sort of errors on the application. It's, you know, they checked both boxes, whether they were a nonprofit or not. It really came across more like sort of a club than an entity. They don't have a nonprofit status. It was unclear. They have, their whole budget was just not very easy for me to follow. You know, they claimed matching funds, but either they're using $10,000 of the grant funds, or $10,000 of the matching funds. They didn't sort of differentiate between the two. The second largest cost was for developing a website, which does not yet exist. They claimed to serve 11,000 people, but just looking at their mailings, that number is not sort of there. So, you know, it's just one of those things that I went through that application. I have numbers on the printing costs. It just didn't, none of it made sense to me as I went through. What are they asking for? Money-wise, what are they using the money for? You know, it was a digital present, project is what I got out of the application. And yet, the biggest, there was huge expenses for printing. You know, and I'm a bit of an internet troll, so I went and looked at their website. The website doesn't exist, and you don't even own the domain name. And the reason I know you don't own the domain name is because I own it. I went out and bought it last night. You know, it was out there, and I'm like, okay- You know, it was out there, and I'm like, okay, what kind of grant is this? This is not a professional organization or not somebody together. And so when I make my motion later on, their grant request is for $0 on their application. And that strikes me as the number that we should give them. And that brings me to the second piece. You know, I'm looking at the Kala Arts, and I wish I could see your application. I was hoping we would have gotten them all, but if those numbers, or not Kala, sorry, Bay Area Film Festival, if I'm looking at that return on investment for a $10,000 investment, we're getting $102,000, that's over a 900% return on investment. That's incredible. And so that's something I'd want to participate in. And I've sort of gone off on my rant here, so I'll stop.
Okay, Vice Mayor Medina.
You know what? I'm going to defer to the artist we have on council. I'm always really interested to hear his opinions on these things. I'll cede my time to Scott.
Okay, Member Martinez.
So I went to performing arts school from kindergarten through ninth, actually 12th grade. But, so, yes, I have an appreciation for the arts, and so I had a lot of feeling in heart for these applications that I read independently. I did, actually through a different lens, however, I did have a focus on the Historical Society that, just when I was looking at the numbers of people, and I'll just frame it as directly served, when I look at Kala, there's 225 people, 45th Street Artists Co-op, 230 people. Friends of ECDC, that's even, you know, 72 specific families that I know are going to be served. So I think about the Oakland Ballet Company I've had the opportunity to see perform. And growing up in performing arts schools, I know the impact that seeing dance performances has on kids. And we actually did polling not that long ago that showed in our community, especially with the youth, that there is a hunger for dance. That is, there is a ready-made audience in our schools, and those kids are ready for this, as well as music. So, he didn't say it, but Mr. Ting is most recently music school at Annie Yates' teacher. And if any of you came to our winter celebration, that is where our children shine and really have so many opportunities to grow in a different way in the classroom when they're presented with these opportunities, as well as poetry, although I haven't seen the kids do the poetry yet. That is something that interests me as well. JSA, while it's serving seniors, it's another arts issue that touches people directly. They serve 1,200 people on a regular basis at JSA, and I'm proud to have them as part of our community. Whereas, I actually, I like the idea of the Emeryville Historical Society. I just didn't feel that it was of the same caliber of the other grant applications. What I would prefer is that we help them with some seed money for what they're trying to do. I do believe that there are some historical artifacts that need to be preserved. I think there's a value in digitizing those, but I also believe that this can happen over time. Whereas when I read the other grants, it was a very specific, we need X amount of money. For instance, the poetry application had pages upon pages of specific programs that were going to happen attached to specific dates with who exactly was going to attend, and then a product at the end. And that was what I was looking for in these grant applications. So what I would prefer is that we can get to the exact numbers after all of our comments, but that we give the Historical Society some seed money to get their start. I understand they haven't achieved nonprofit status yet, but I've also talked to members of the community who've said that that is forthcoming and that the funds for that are, you know, going to be made available through a private party. So I'd like to see that happen before we invest a whole top-limit grant, community grant, to invest that with the Historical Society. So I'll leave my comments at that for now.
Thank you. Member Donahue.
Well, you know, I am a public artist, so this is, you know, art just is, over time, a significant thing in the lives of people. And so it gives me pleasure that our city can have monies available for this purpose. And I would say I would entertain a motion, basically like Councilmember Martinez is proposing, and go forward with that approach.
Okay, so my comments are, I want to thank everybody for staying through the long evening to speak on behalf of your program. I've long been a strong supporter of the arts. The ballet is one of my favorite things to add to this. I took dance all through school, and I'm a huge fan of teaching children dance and performing arts. And so any opportunity we can do that is really great. I was also surprised that the Berkeley Film Festival did not make the list, and I understand there was some confusion around the application, and I just want to echo the prior comments. I attended Welcome to the Neighborhood last night. I frequently go and see independent short films. I went to the San Francisco Film Festivals, some of the shows this last week as well here in Oakland and across the bay. And I think that it's true that we don't have, as Rick said, we don't have enough funding and community investment for the arts. And I wish every applicant could be funded, to be honest with you. That's my preference. And the reality is that we're trying to do more than a lot of other communities in our situation would do. I'm grateful to the members of the committee who put the time into reviewing these applications. I think that needs to be lifted up as well, and I appreciate your diligence in doing that. And so I don't see anything here that I don't like. I know a lot of the people who have applied Kala. I've, you know, spent time there. I'm a member of the Organic Community Garden over at Temescal. And so all of these things are excellent, you know, contributions to the community. But I'm going to be interested, having heard some suggestions, I want to echo that I want to see the Berkeley Film Foundation be continuously funded by the city of Emeryville so that we have a North County investment in that. So with that, that is my comment. And then I think you had a comment, and then you had one more.
Yeah, so I would ask that in the future for these staff reports, it'd be really helpful for me personally to get some sort of spreadsheet about, like, am that requested? If it's like, you know, what the organizational status is, 516, C4, whatever, just so that we know, and maybe some, like, rankings on certain subject matters, something a little more quantifiable for me to look at rather than just reading through every single application, trying to compare apples to oranges, really. I think that would just be helpful for my process.
Before I take your comment, I would just add on to that, that I think in the future it would be helpful to see all the applications. I know we're investing in the committee's time and effort, but as we had here tonight, you know, we didn't have Berkeley Film Foundation's application in front of us to review, but it's reasonable to anticipate that someone not recommended for funding would show up. I think in the future that would be helpful for us to receive that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I neglected to signal my support for Berkeley Film Foundation. What I did get to say that I went to performing arts schools, K through 12, but then I went to film school. And that's where I got questioned by grad students. I'm like, why is that your major? You're just wasting your life. And I said, no, you don't understand. You can evaluate everything through the lens of film. And it's, you know, I spent 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM every Tuesday in the best theaters at USC Film School because I was a Critical Studies major. I didn't make the films. I watched them voraciously. And so I'm aware of Berkeley Film Foundation. I'm a supporter. Films like Dogtown Redemption, Rick Tijada Flores' My Bolivia, the documentary on Eugene Sway, these touch our community members directly, and they touch many lives. And I happen to know of direct benefits of supporting film. And also, they're an established foundation that leverages the money that, you know, this is what we give them as a pittance compared to their true needs and the places where they're able to fundraise, when they're able to say, these cities in the Bay Area are supporting us, and you should too. And that's part of the opportunity that's lost when we miss funding this foundation. So, thank you for letting me tag on those comments. I forgot.
No problem. So everyone having spoken, Member Pats.
So I'd like to make a motion that we fully fund 10 of the 11 institutions, which is all of them but the Historical Society. And so I can do that as a single motion, or I'd love to conjoin it and offer to take those funds. And I'm just going to say this with a comment that the Historical Society, based on their budget, has private funding to do everything they've asked to do. And I will, you know, happily donate their domain name back to them if they are fully private-funded.
Would you like to make that motion, and we can discuss further? Because it seems that's the place where there's...
So, I'm sorry, second. So split the motion or not is what I'm...
I'm fine with you doing that to then have a discussion so we don't hold, so that...
So, yeah, so I'm going to say I move the 10 out of the 11 grants to fully fund as recommended.
I would like to second that motion for those, so we can move that on.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Okay, Mr. Pats.
So for my second motion, I'd like to offer that we fund Kala's grant request, which is at the Max, I'm sorry, I keep saying Kala, I mean Berkeley Film Festival.
Foundation.
I should not do names.
That's okay, they're not on the...
Horribly named.
If you stuck to BFF, it would probably be easier.
Yeah, I see. That, yeah, moving forward. We fully fund their grant at $10,000, and I agree with what Member Martinez said about, you know, get your nonprofit status, get some things organized. You've got some seed money coming from the community, and utilize that. So that's my motion, is that we, instead of funding the Historical Society, and I'm not sure I'll get a second, but that's my motion.
The motion?
Can I add something real quick, just for clarification?
Yes.
I did want to clarify that it was mentioned about Historical Society not having nonprofit status, but Friends of the Senior Center nonprofit status was their sponsor, and that's part of an option that is part of this program.
Sure.
So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Pedro. So I have a motion for Member Pats to allocate the remaining $10,000 in this fund to the Berkeley Film Foundation. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Member Pats and a second by Member Donahue to approve an allocation of $10,000 to the Berkeley Film Foundation. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Can you get to me last?
Skipping Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Pats?
No, she's got to be called in order. That's how we do this.
I gotta be called in order?
Yes, that's right. Otherwise, we would all pass, and then we would...
All right, I'm going to say no. I'm going to say no. Although I support Berkeley Film Foundation, it's just not the exact combination that I'm supporting.
Councilmember Pats?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes.
And Mayor Bowers?
Yes. Okay, so that takes care of item 12.1. Item 12.2 is City Council Review of the Appeal of a Planning Commission Decision Approving Sprint Antennas on Water Tower at 1255 Powell Street. And for this, I'd like to open, if possible, by offering to Member Martinez, who asked us to consider this matter, her comments.
Yeah, thank you. So when this came before us as an item that we could appeal, I was interested in getting more information, as I am interested in the effects and the study of new cell towers. I also wanted to know what the changes were with older cell towers. And as we had the ability to do this, I wanted to make sure that we were exercising all of our ability as a city to take a look at what the changes were. And staff graciously shared with me the Planning Commission meeting and all of the materials that were available to the Planning Commission. And it became clear to me by reading the materials and getting to the end of the meeting that we are limited in what we are able to approve and review in this specific process. I think the Planning Commission did a good job tackling the design elements of this, but certain concerns, for instance, that we may have been copied on, I think we were copied on by certain members of the public who had health concerns, those are not in our domain or our purview to review. Concerns that I had regarding, you know, any fees that we can impose or were allayed, and I'm satisfied with the constraints that the Planning Commission had to make their decisions, and I am supportive of not taking action on this item.
Okay, are there clarifying questions? Seeing none, this matter is open for public comment. Members of the public wish to comment have three minutes. Seeing none, I will bring it back. Is there anybody who wishes to discuss this matter?
No.
No, I will entertain a motion.
So would it be a motion?
Actually, we just, Charlie, all you need is direction that we are to take no action, or do you need a motion for that?
No, no, actually, the council, under the municipal code, you have three options at this point. You can affirm the decision of the commission and dismiss the appeal based on a determination that the facts in the record don't warrant further hearing. You can set a public hearing date on the appeal, or you can remand the matter back to the commission. It sounds to me as if...
I would like to make a motion to affirm the Planning Commission decision and...
And end the matter.
Dismiss the appeal.
And dismiss the appeal.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Member Pats to affirm the Planning Commission's decision and dismiss this appeal. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Matter is affirmed and dismissed is the appeal. Item 12.3 is Consideration of Electric Bicycle Share Services and Electric Scooters in Emeryville. Nancy?
Do you want a presentation on it, or do you want to skip it?
We can skip and just discuss if that's okay. Kind of talk about why I brought this up.
Sure.
Okay, I think we'll pass on the presentation. So in order to, Mr. City Attorney, would you like me to call public comment, even though we had no presentation? And then, or do you want me to let her discuss the subject for why she brought it up and then call public comment?
I would prefer if you called for public comment, and then the council can discuss.
Okay. So this matter is open for public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak have three minutes to do so. Seeing none, the public comment is now closed, and I'd like to begin with Vice Mayor Medina.
Great. So I asked for this item to be placed on the agenda for a couple of reasons. I was asked by multiple members of council about this matter, about all these new dockless bikes and electric bikes popping up the area, and a lot of residents in the community were asking about it as well. It's come up at BPAC and Transportation Committee, something that there's a lot of interest in, and because of the Brown Act, we can't really all have a conversation about it outside of this venue, so here we are. We are in a contract with Motivate, and I asked our city attorney to look at that contract because I know that San Francisco, for instance, was in the exact same contract but got electric bikes, and I was very curious about that process. There is a provision in the contract that does allow us to give them 90 days to provide us with an RFP essentially, to operate electric bikes. And San Francisco reached a settlement where they opened it up to other businesses and jump bikes because Motivate was not prepared to do so at that time. In the course of, you know, coming to this meeting, I've spoken with Motivate and their public affairs firm, as well as I've been reached out to by OFO, which is a competing bicycle company. And really, I think I've got a couple of things that I think we could further get out of having a bike share system, which I already think is a really good step forward, and we have more stations coming, especially to the peninsula area. There's some concerns about the docked bike shares, you know, taking up parking spaces, maybe not being super well utilized in some spaces. And also, they kind of inadvertently create a little bit of redlining because they are going in certain neighborhoods. And so certain neighborhoods cannot be served by them because they can only, you know, be docked in a couple of places, and if you go too far, then you're getting charged for more additional time. So dockless bikes can eliminate that problem but create a host of others, whereas you can have bikes in the sidewalks. And electric bikes have a lot of benefit in terms of being able to take people further, or people with limited mobility can use them to do errands, and that's really helpful as well. The other major concern that I have is that the current bikes that we have do not have telemetric monitoring devices on them. They don't have GPS data. We get where they are taken out and where they are put back, and we do not see anything about the routes in between. And I've been following these other bike share companies very closely, and I know that they are offering to cities, and OFO made this very clear, data sharing packages where they give the cities aggregated anonymized data, which can be really helpful when applying for grants or looking at where we want to invest in transit infrastructure. And so I brought those concerns to Motivate, and they wanted to relay a couple of things. They are already in talks with the city of Oakland, looking to debut electric bikes in... the city of Oakland, looking to debut electric bikes in the East Bay later this year. Um, they're interested in doing so within the next, um, six months as soon as possible. Those bikes would be available in the same dock stations at the same price. There would be no separate structure. If you're a member, you would already get access to them. They're also interested in launching lock-two bikes, which are dockless bikes, but they have to lock to something, which sort of eliminates the leaving them directly in the middle of the street problem. So, it's more similar to the jump bikes that you might have seen in San Francisco and less similar to the Lime bikes, which you might have seen in the middle of the street. Um, some cities have had more problems with this than others, and that really depends on how the city sets up its regulations around this. They do not do, um, scooters, and scooters are not at all a problem with our contract. And I know councilmember Pats is curious about the scooters. Whole separate kit and caboodle, if you wanna bring that up. That's on you, buddy. I don't care about scooters. Um, so, I just don't. Um, so, yeah, that's kind of where I am on it. I would really, and so, I, I did, you know, press to Motivate that. I, the concern of mine is that we are not currently getting data that's helpful for us in choosing where to spend our transportation dollars. And they said it is on the table. They're, in, um, New York, they have in their app an opt-in system of sharing, um, with the city what routes you use. And they're gonna be coming back to me with the information on what percentage of users is actually opting, because New York really wanted that information as well. And also outfitting their electric bikes, and especially the dockless lock-twos coming early next year, um, with that same sort of, um, GPS. Um, so, we would get all of the data. So, my thoughts are this. Um, I think we should continue to talk with Motivate and make sure we get these community benefits that could be offered by, um, exercising that option in our contract. We don't have to exercise that option necessarily to get those same benefits, but we should keep it on the table. Um, and we could do that by doing a study session, uh, where we can have, you know, Motivate coming in really layout, set guidelines, or we can take this to Transportation Committee. Um, Scott and I can look at it in depth and come back and report out. And I sort of, you know, since so many people were interested in it, wanted to get your opinions, hear from you about what next steps we should take.
Thank you, member Donahue.
Uh, I would like it just to go to Transportation Committee. We could figure it out, come back.
Thank you, member Martinez.
Did we do public comment yet? Because she kinda did the presentation.
I did it at the very beginning because there was no, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I would, uh, I'm, I'm fine with either a study session or, uh, the Transportation Committee. I wanna thank Vice Mayor Medina for bringing this item forward because it's, um, it's, it's a fast-moving world, and we're seeing dockless bikes and e-bikes and scooters and all sorts of new modes of transportation, um, popping up. And we do wanna stay on the, you know, s- on the bleeding edge of all this technology. Um, what I don't wanna do is invoke the, the 90-day clause in the Motivate contract because I think it's a very short amount of time for a very complex issue that, um, I don't want staff and the city attorney's office to be spending time on that when it's... I think it's a great idea to go to either Transportation Committee or a study session, um, with Motivate.
Thank you, member Pats.
Um, I'm gonna, I wanted to echo what member Donahue said, but I realized the Transportation Committee is filled with anti-scooterists, so...
Whoa, 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 you're, you're going too far saying that.
Yeah, well...
It's still his turn. Continue.
So, uh, I just, I said populated with, I didn't say all of the members of Transportation Committee. Uh, my concern around scooters is, one, I love them. I've been riding the Lime scooters recently, and, uh, my 19-year-old and 16-year-old nieces were visiting in the city, and their favorite part of all of San Francisco was the scooter rentals, so...
They lied to you.
They lied to me? Okay. Um, wow. Hate scooters and now has besmirched my niece's fine name. Um, I, I, I crushed here. Uh, so, if I can trust the Transportation Committee, my biggest concern is San Francisco did not address the scooter issue, and so, they just showed up. And so, I wanna make sure that we don't get stuck there. We are a, uh, between two very low, between two Bart stations that could very soon have a bunch of scooters dumped and then just left on our streets if we don't have an ordinance. So, I just, Scott, I can trust you to bring that back to the Transportation Committee.
Yeah, no problem.
And so that we have something to deal with. And again, just because I like them doesn't mean we have to bring scooters to town, but if you don't want them, you gotta have a rule against them.
Well, since that was a perfect, um, segue for me because I hate them and, um...
Segways or scooters? Segways are different.
They're both scooters. One's for people who don't wanna use their feet at all. Um, yeah, so I, I support giving the Transportation Committee the ability to review this. I agree with the comments councilmember Martinez made. I don't agree with the comments councilmember Pats made. Um, I, I think scooters are a nuisance personally. I might get little kids like them, but I, I, they, there is no place, they just get dropped on the public right-of-way. And so, I actually do agree with you on, if we aren't gonna have them, I think we should have a very simple ordinance or policy that prohibit, however that needs to look in. And I'm asking the Transportation Committee to figure that out, to simply prohibit that, the, the leaving of them by those types of providers for the time being, because I, I don't wanna see sidewalks. There, there are hazards to actually kids if they're laying on the sidewalks. They're a nuisance. Kids pick, can pick them up and do things. Adults can trip over them. They can block people in wheelchairs from, from using the sidewalk. I just think that, um, they, they haven't been demonstrated to me to be a, a good use of a public, um, form of transportation that i- is safely docked or stored in places that are responsible. So, with that, um, councilmember or Vice Mayor Medina, do you wanna ask for consensus on a piece of direction? Is, is it okay to say that Transportation Committee is what I kinda heard people say? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with transportation, but I don't wanna completely eliminate the, um, us coming back with talking about the contract because, um, you know, if it, they come to market with the electric bikes that don't have telemetric devices on them, then we never, in the next 10 years, have the opportunity to ask for it again. That's 10 years of data. So, I just wanna, I wanna continue to, and look into that and make sure that we can discuss with the company with all options on the table.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of that. Are other members supportive of that?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pats?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Staff, I think we have direction. Is there, it's an action, but there's no motion required to do that, right?
Uh, no, there's no motion if, um, there's this consensus that I'm hearing on the council. Um, and one thing I will also add for the Transportation Committee members, um, SF Gate is reporting that, um, San Francisco Port of Supes just adopted a law, or adopted an ordinance, first reading of an ordinance regarding, um, regulation of scooters on their streets, so...
I'm familiar, and it was a really dramatic article, considering the subject matter.
Can I, can I ask, so do they have an agreement with the scooter company?
Oh, no, this, I'll forward it to you.
Okay, 'cause I'm, I'm concerned about the, we worked very hard with Motivate on several issues, one of them being equity. And if there's no equity piece to the scooter just, I'm, I don't know how interested I am.
Yeah, so I think, well, let's split those and bring those as separate items, 'cause I think they really do deserve separate consideration. I'm really interested in working forward, um, with Bike Share and then doing, um, scooters as a whole separate kit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, it just reiterates my point that they, three different companies drop scooters all in San Francisco. And they, and, and as much as I'm pro-scooter, I understand the nuisance issue.
It's, it's just when I, in San Francisco, it's as though this, the clone of the same person is riding all of the scooters. And it's a very specifically aged person...
It literally could be. That was the scary part.
...the same. And sometimes they're in packs. So, it's...
To be continued at Transportation Committee.
One of those clones.
Item 12.4 is council goal setting. Madam City Manager?
Do you desire a presentation?
Members, do you desire a presentation on the city goals?
This is a representation of the feedback that we got.
We are, we are revisiting this, um, item from last time. Members, do you wish to have a presentation and walk through this, or what do you like to do on the goals?
I don't think I need a presentation.
No presentation is required or requested?
I don't need a presentation.
Okay, so, at this time, I will open this matter for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on the city's goals may do so up for three minutes. Any members?
Um, yes.
Seeing none, public comment is over. And, um, I'll begin with member Donahue.
Well, uh...
So, um, for the benefit of everybody, we are reviewing the, the, I believe we had, um, 10 priorities, yep, that we set out, and we had staff kind of outline them and fleshed them out with a little bit of timeline and the action steps that are intermediate between now and the, uh, completion of those projects. And this was an opportunity for us to look at them kind of together with all those details, ask questions about timelines or, um, interim steps, things that are there or are missing, and to, um, if, if we wish to make changes to this, the goals or priorities and timelines, we can do so today.
It, it looks like we're doing a lot in a short amount of time, is all I can say. And that would be marvelous if we can really do that.
Okay.
Just a, you know, I, I, our staff is really gonna be working hard if we're doing that. And that would be great.
Member, uh, Pats?
Did Chad step out?
Yes.
Oh, so, when I, when I brought this to the Economic Development Committee, this was one of the topics they, they talk... Oh, Bill's here. You can help me if I... They seem really supportive of these items at the, uh, Economic Development Committee. And I felt really good presenting them and talking about them. I think we did a good job of really hitting the highlights. And so, I'm liking this fleshed out, so I don't have any changes at this time.
Vice Mayor Medina?
I'm really happy with, um, how the active transportation and safety pieces come out. I think these are really good first steps, um, and really, um, some achievable things that I know Public Works is working on really sa- really quickly.
Uh, member Martinez?
I don't have any changes at this time, and I wanna thank staff for bringing this forward.
Okay, I'm just reviewing a couple small things here. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm grateful as well to us, uh, for having done this and to the staff for facilitating this. I'm not necessarily proposing to amend what's on here, but I just wanna make a couple of comments for, um, context on a couple items. So, item nine was the Communications Director. And, um, I wanna speak just for a moment about, and I wish Chad was here now, but, um...
He might still be. We could go look.
He what?
He might still be in his office if you want some good luck.
Yeah, I'll talk about the other item first. Um, so, the one item was the, probably the one, I want Lisa here for them. Um, why don't, why don't we let Michael do that? 'Cause my...
What, is it...
Emergency preparedness is the other one.
That's why I stayed.
Yeah, those are the two that I wanted to talk about. I think all the other ones are really well done. Um, on the emergency preparedness one, you know, the tabletop exercise for city staff, um, I, I want to see us, you know, we, we have joint exercise with Berkeley Office of Management. I want to add beyond that, that there be a, um, an actual joint citywide drill. Um, and it doesn't have to be October of this year, obviously. But I think one of the things that we have talked about is, um, everything from mutual aid to preparedness. We, we've had this discussion about, you know, Urban Shield is being defunded, so training opportunities for fire and police, um, are, to, to do sort of mass casualty work are going away. We've talked about practicing our plan. Berkeley practices their plan. And we've had that discussion for a while, how we wanna give our fire and police personnel, um, some greater, um, exposure. And so, I think that the mass exercise drill and the tabletop discussions between the staff level with their, with their Office of Management is good. But I actually want us to have on here as a, as a goal for 2019, that we actually do a drill. I, is council okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, we, we, yes?
Oh, I was just...
Can you use a microphone? Sorry. I know.
Why aren't you so glad you stayed?
Oh, yes.
So, the last bullet point, which is the joint exercise with Berkeley Office, it, it is supposed to say emergency management. And actually, that is what we discussed in terms of working together with, um, ACFD and Berkeley Fire and getting PD, both PDs involved. And so, what I'll do is I'll flesh it out, but that is what that is supposed to represent.
So, can you just clarify for me the, um, 'cause it says mass drill exercise is April or May, and I thought they did their thing in September.
Um, the mass drill exercise, they did. And the mass drill exercise was week, so we talked about, oh, the bullet points are now swimming in front of me. Um, we are working with ACFD. And so, actually, when we were listing these, they were three different things. So, there's a tabletop exercise for city staff, and then the mass drill exercise. Um, and the bullet points just got a little finagle. So, I will need to revisit this and look at the timelines because the tabletop is different than a mass drill.
Well, that's why I'm confused by this section, is that it doesn't, it wasn't clear to me what staff was proposing to do. Um, so, I, to be clear, when we discussed this item, the, the thing I'm hoping to have is that there is a tabletop exercise for staff. And we have had that conversation about the shake room or sending a handful of critical, um, department heads or staff who would be here in the event of emergency to the training that they do on, on Central Coast or wherever they do it.
Yes.
To get that training and have a core group of people who understand the critical response. I think that having people this year attend Berkeley's mass drill and, and participate at a high level in coordination with their Office of Emergency Management to see how they run their drill, um, be, be in the live room with them, like, to facilitate that as much as we can so that our staff have the ability to see it in Berkeley as they do it, with the goal being that next year, that the actual drill be a joint Emeryville Berkeley drill where both cities are engaged in this, in a simultaneous simulated event that allows for a response. Is that, is that...
Yes, that is, that is what we thought because we know that it wouldn't be realistic to have the actual drill exercise this year, but we would wanted to go over and observe
Yes.
And be, um, part of that. And so, I think the April-May, um, may have been the preliminary idea before we actually had any details, and we thought we'd start working on it then with not, it's actually not the actual deadline that's gonna be done. So, I will reword, I will rework the, that paragraph right there to actually reflect what it's supposed to, which is exactly as you said. We wanna start with the tabletop exercise because that's our next step in our plan, in our disaster preparedness plan that Lori has developed. Um, and then we would like to actually, and ACFD, um, Division Chief John Walsh is going to assist us. He's gonna continue to work with us 'cause he's their representative for the EOC. Um, and so, he is actually gonna help us organize and get, and allow us to go watch Berkeley participate. And then also coordinate a mass exercise with both part, with both cities.
Okay. So... Counsel, are you agreeable with the, the items that I've asked about?
I am, and may, may I ask about one more item? Um, so, in the past, when, um, Scott and I came on to council, we had the opportunity for all of council to be trained at the EOC with our responsibilities in case of a disaster. And I'm wondering how that fits into this model.
So, this is actually very, um, general. We actually do have, um, something that we've actually shared with the mayor in terms of items that we're still working on, and a council training is one of the next things on our list.
I just wanted to make sure that was incorporated in this.
Yes. No, it's actually one of the next things we're scheduling with ACFD. We'll probably have to do it during an open session here because it involves all of you, but we will take you on tours of the EOC. Um, Lori just got new tables.
We did it. We, we, I think we, um, I don't remember if we noticed it like a regular meeting, but we did, we held it at the EOC last time.
And the only concern is that it's an actual, the fire, allowing the public in there, it might not be as, you know, there might be more interest to participate than...
But isn't there an exception, Michael, for trainings?
If you're at a, there's an, there's an exception if you're in a conference. So, if you go to like a league conference or what have you. But if you're doing a training, um, I mean, I can review it, but if you're asking, like, right now, my advice is you will probably have to notice it as a Brown Act meeting.
If you wouldn't mind just asking, um, Mr. Biddle a five-minute question, he's the person who said, "Go ahead."
Okay.
Um, and I, there were no members of the public who came. They may have been noticed. They may have been invited, but no one came.
And that was Lori's recollection as well.
And that would be my expectation, is even if we do have to notice it, even if we do open it up to the public, my experience is that you may get one or two people, and before long, they'll get pretty bored. And it, it doesn't matter. If they wanna sit there and observe, there's nothing wrong with that anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, we'll, we'll have a cleaned-up version sent to council on that.
Yes.
Thank you. And then, uh, I asked Chad, I appreciate you sticking around. Um, on item nine, the Communications Director, um, I just wanna highlight for my colleagues something that I'm, I'm gonna ask about in the future, and I just wanna, to be on your radar, Chad, as well. Um, the idea about staffing around a Communications Director, what could that role include and what could we do? We have it on here, um, to discuss it. It says June 5th, and I am, don't know who read my mind, but that's exactly when I was hoping we would discuss it. Um, the reason being is that we're gonna look at potential revenue measures for the fall, and, um, not predicting what any member of council will vote or say or do here on any of that at that time. Um, I just... I just wanted to flag for people that I've had meetings with several small local-serving restaurants in particular. I had a two-hour one today, actually. And there's, there's challenges that face them, and they, there is a critical mass of them that just want to talk about what could we do to be more sustainable. And that's a positive frame, and I'm always interested in talking to people who have a positive frame. And so one of the things that has come up, there's several ideas that have come up, and I think when we talk in June more about other revenue opportunities, I have a couple other ideas to submit to council that I think might be of interest to this group. But one of the things I really want people to start time thinking about, and I want to, you know, just leave space to flesh this one out a little more, is the role that this position could play in really helping drive economic development. So both advancing community events and rec services and programs, I mean, I had small businesses say to me that, "Do you guys do any community events? Do you have any events in your community?" "I know about all the events in San Francisco, I know about these kids' events in Oakland, but I don't know about community events." And I was kind of surprised, I said, "Yeah," but I realize I'm much closer to those issues than they are. And I think that there are opportunities for us to enhance the local economy, promote local events, provide the public with accurate information, which is a problem we have sometimes here, and, and also really advance the, the interests of the businesses that call our community home. And I think that this is a position that, we say Communications Director, now we didn't really know what the word was going to be when we started, and I think Councilmember Pats helped us with that, but I just wanted to flag all those things, is I think that those are things that I would like members and staff to think about in the context of this. So just to keep an open mind on that. That was really my only other comment. So staff, would you like a, do you need a motion to approve the council goals, since it's technically staff?
I think it should be, yes.
Okay, so at this time, is there more discussion?
Nope.
Nope, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve as amended?
Second.
There's a motion by Member Martinez and a second by, I'm sorry, yes, and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the council goals and priorities and timelines as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Item 13 is department head reports. Are there any this evening? I'm not seeing any, no department head reports. Future agenda item requests from council members? Are there any council members who have agenda items they are looking to request? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 10:07, the meeting is adjourned.